Good evening. My name is Eric Wunsch from I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. Today is June 25th and the time is 6:36 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a roll call of members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Wunsch, Chairman here. Ryan Kelly, Vice Chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart, Professional Engineer.
Here.
Benjamin Xavier is not here. Paul Fernandez. And Mark Zemery is not here. Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Here.
And Andrew Brownman, Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer.
Here.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1, as such. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, you will automatically be muted and unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting, please use the raise hand function. If you are participating via telephone, press star nine to activate the raise hand feature. Staff will announce your name and unmute you when it's your turn to speak. The video feature has been disabled for public participation. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for a public hearing is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro in opposition or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetland related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We need to add a bond release to the agenda for IWC 2020-08. It's 169 Enterprise Drive.
Correct, under section eight.
Yep.
I motion to add the bond release for IWC 2020-08 to the agenda.
Second.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the general public. There's anybody who in the chambers would like to come forward to speak in a general nature. Anything that's not in front of us this evening, come on up. Come on up.
I want to mention just anybody who's coming up. Staff is still having a hard time hearing the recording. If we could speak into the microphone, state your name and your address.
We have 237 Cottage Street. So, general question, it came up with potential hydrofracture a couple meetings ago, a project that's not on tonight. Brought up some concerns. It was acknowledged by several of the members of you up there that you probably need some more information because if this is going to be a practice that's used, been used in our town and since we've learned these, and its impacts on wetlands, then I just really want to make sure somebody's taking a look and actually following through with that because if that fracturing does have different effects on the surrounding wetlands, then I would think it would still be a wetlands purview. So even if it's a matter of somebody's got to find out at the town, okay, at what point will the hydrofracture affect or not affect, you know, through whatever scientific whatever, I'm not, I don't do that for a living, but you know what I mean? At what point will it not interrupt mole salamanders, which are specifically underground? I think that we do need some more information on that so that either you guys can definitively say yes or no, it's not our purview when it comes to wetlands and if somebody is going to install wells by that method. So I just want to make sure that's something that kind of gets lifted to the top.
Want us to give an update?
Sure.
Give that to you.
Any information?
You kind of put all of that together, so.
You were going to pull up the Southwest, so I don't know if anything is left for that.
No.
Okay. We reached out to our health department to see if they had any potential resources or if they were willing to talk. They said that it doesn't have, they only basically handle their state regulations. We reached out to Southwest Conservation District to see if they had somebody on staff that they, we could talk to. They said at the moment, they don't have a hydrogeologist on staff right now that would be dealing with some of the concerns in the area, but they were, and they were in the middle of some sort of big review at the moment when we reached out to them before. We can follow up, but they said if we want, they can maybe help us try to connect someone together to look at those items. So we did reach out to them. I think the health department at that time had said that they had some other contact. Unfortunately, our director of health has left and we will be getting a new director of health halfway through this month that will be hired. So unfortunately, we won't be able to connect some of those things before she left, but we can reach back out to Southwest now that their deadline is over and see if they can connect us with someone.
Okay, but we're, it hasn't gotten back for us, but continue.
We did, we did take a couple steps forward to try to make some connections. It's just, it's a, it's a really interesting, and if I'm, if I remember correctly, you know, the concern is both, you know, any potential chemicals that they use within the water and that potential to the adjacent wetlands as well as potential groundwater impact to the adjacent wetlands. So when we talk about chemicals and things like that, that's kind of one expertise, but when we talk about groundwater and how that, will it affect it? What area would it affect? What's that distance? You're also dealing with a hydrogeologist, so it's kind of two separate people. And so the question is, is do we kind of just deal with one if we can get the resources for one or are we trying to do both?
The concern wasn't even so much the humans. It was, it was really a wetlands thing, not a humans thing and a TMZ thing. It was not even so much the chemical aspect, which is an issue. Mine was the hydrofracture itself with reverberation or whatever you want to call it. We specifically, in the.
We, we need to do our, we need to do some due diligence.
Right.
So you, I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
Are correct.
Let them do their due diligence to find out how it will affect, because we need to be concerned how it affects everything, not, so.
Correct.
If we're talking about the vibrations, you know, again, is that something a biologist could be handled or do we need?
Right, so we need to.
An acoustician to come in to talk about, you know, so it's like.
This is not a simple answer, so we're looking into it and we'll.
That which is possible.
So let them.
I know it's a awful topic and it's got a lot of issues between potential contaminants and.
So now it's.
Between the channels and between the draining of wetlands. It has a lot of components which in most society, we're going to go, oh God, that's disgusting.
No, we're not going to put it off, but we, but we're not going to give you a quick solution on something, so we want to take our time to truly understand it. So it is, we have not just said, oh yeah, we'll look into it or not.
That's awesome.
So let them continue to, to do their part.
Fantastic.
Okay. Anybody else in chambers?
Or online.
Anybody online?
If you are online and you'd like to speak, you do have to use the raise hand function so we can ask, unmute you.
Okay, moving on to regulated activities, there are none. Moving on to a regular meeting. IWV, is that right?
Yep, IWV.
IWV, 2024-04, file number 1504, 30 Pepperidge Road, clearing and depositing debris in wetlands at Puplin Review Area and abutting property.
So IWV is tied together with IWR 2025-02. We've combined them together because one's the violation and one is the remediation.
Correct.
So you'll remember this from the last meeting. The property owners are here to answer questions. There is an updated plan that you have. All of our concerns, our main concern was addressed in that some plants were not on the property, so the plan's been changed as far as that goes, but there are a couple of items that weren't addressed, which was to show where wetland markers are, and there was a note as far as mulching, a continuous mulching versus mulching the first time out. Those notes haven't been addressed on, on these plans, so.
You said the applicant for the.
The property owners. Yes, the applicants are here to speak.
Okay, are they going to come forward to speak?
Say your name and the address, please, into the microphone.
Hi, I'm Marie Calgaz, 30 Pepper. So, well, do you have a plan of doing a review?
You can, you can talk about your concerns.
So, yeah, our concern is does the quantity of plants decide and ask me when I'm going to do that, and finally he did. We're just concerned about the quantity. I don't think we need as many. Yeah, if you look at the perennials and the other ones in wetlands.
Why is it you feel you don't need the quantity that, did you recommend this?
No, so their representative was Jim McManus, JMM Wetland Consulting. And this is the plan that they came up with. It was the applicants that hired the, their representative, and this was the plan that they, that he had come up with.
But it was, I actually got a hold of him. It was his landscape architect that put it together. And he said, that's fine, but he told me to bring it up and discuss it with you because he thought it was, that it could, because I said it could actually be half. I mean, why didn't he say it was the architect that put it, put it in there? We don't need, for the amount of property, we don't need all these plants.
So how, how do you feel that you don't need it and your architect feels you do?
Well, Jim doesn't also think if we, it's, had we viewed the list like I had, because I've been trying to tell him, he's been so busy, I just, for the amount of properties that's there.
I understand you believe it to be too much, but what is your basis for saying that this is too much?
So the size, I mean, that is a lot. I mean, if you're looking 18 by 24, you know, containers for the amount of property.
18 by 24 is the height of the plant, the small plants.
Oh, yeah, no, no, we're talking about.
176 plants, 108, 157, 157, and then you have a 172, 201. Even if you have.
See the numbers.
I think it grows, that's, that's too much.
So if the, if the architect you, you hired to come up with a plan is recommending this, I'm just trying to understand why you feel it's not appropriate.
I think the confusion is how did, how did a set of plans from your consultant that you hired that in theory you should have endorsed get in front of a commission that now you're saying you don't endorse?
So if you'd like to reissue these plans and kind of hit the reset button, that's okay.
It's just modifying the amount of plants.
Right.
That's just it, like I told Jim, and he said to bring it up at today's meeting.
Okay. Andrew, have you, you had a chance to review these?
I have reviewed the plans, yes.
What is your take on their concerns and about the quantity?
Okay, so you've got a total square foot area that's been disrupted of 6,000 square feet. Okay, just over 6,000 square. There are hundreds of plants on here. Now, most of them are perennials. There's, you know, the selection of plants are appropriate. The quantity of plants could be argued that it's, it's pretty heavy. I'm a little reluctant to give the opinion, and this is what their professional had come up with.
Correct.
And I wouldn't want to.
I mean, the benefit of a heavy planting plan is you have less likelihood of invasive species coming in, so I think the question is, is if you reduce the number of planting, is there an invasive species monitoring timeframe procedure or something that would, you know,
I'm going to suggest that you maybe take your plans back to your architect and have this conversation with them, because if this is what he's recommending, we're not going to necessarily want to override what he recommends. You presented these plans to us, so.
I had a chance to get back to him on this proposal, yeah?
Then maybe it's a little premature for us to be looking at it if you're not competent.
Because I believe the plants is small right now, unlike what we have here. There is more than three gallons, but they grow up to seven, eight feet, the maturity size.
So like I said, I, I think maybe you should revise the plan and talk your input back in front of us with an updated version of what you guys agree with.
Do you think there's a uniqueness of this remediation, which is that this is on the neighboring properties? So when we think about just the logistics of maintenance of monitoring invasive species on somebody else's property and home business clauses and having people go out, I do understand why maybe the consultant's thought process was upfront to make it heavier to reduce that risk, you know, for the future.
Right.
If that's what we want, I mean, we'll do it. We just thought it's a lot of. Because I do, I do landscape and I know pretty much all my different.
I think you should put it back in front of your architect and let him revise the plans and then.
And you know why, what can be done it? You don't, you just don't.
Can we start?
Yeah, move it with the project, like, remove all the debris.
Until this application is accepted, there's no work that can be.
Because I thought it was accepted, I thought we could start.
No, no, no.
You accept this, you can give us any alternative.
Oh, you mean the amount of.
Yes, I, you accepted.
No, you have an application, you have an application for a permit. The permit is not going to be issued until the commission approves the permit, so you can't begin the work until you have a permit to begin, to start the work.
Because, because we were questioning the.
Well, I have to, they, they, they redo this, and then I have to come back and.
Correct, yes. Your, your choices are to leave the plan as it is and move forward with the, with the process, or go back to the architect and have him revise the plans with what you feel is the right number of plants if he agrees with that.
You're not planning until, until September anyway, so you've got a few months before you should even be doing any planting.
There is, there are sheds, there's driveway, there's a lot of, there's a lot of site work that could get done, which is what he's.
That's what I mean, if I can start moving these issues, because it makes it easy for like even to sound how much space you got.
Without a, without a permit?
I mean.
If on somebody else's property, all.
Well, the, the problem is, is heaven forbid, they start doing all the work now, you've got the soil exposed, and let's say they all come back, or let's say, you know, JM associate says, oh, we can't do it until the spring, you know, and now you've got all this exposed earth, you know, through the winter.
Do you think you can have a revised plan for the next meeting?
Depends on the person, everybody's so busy, trying to get these guys, call them, we can get back to us.
I understand, so.
For me, it could be done yesterday, the plan is there.
Right, but we, you guys need to put a plan in front of us that we can approve. If you guys are saying, here's a plan, but we don't like it.
Yeah, we can't, it's arbitrarily set, we're moving.
I know, exactly, so.
If you just like to move forward with this project here, and then what's the next step then? If you say, it's okay, let's, let's do what's this.
You do it.
Then you do it. Then you follow.
Well, if you can.
I under, I understa.
If you decided that you weren't going to change the planting.
Yes.
We would ask you any other questions that we have. We would then potentially close the hearing and we would deliberate and then vote, vote on it and potentially tonight, and you could walk out here.
Where do you want to do this? I want to, I want to get out, I can, I want to speak. So if you say you give me the okay, I start moving the things up another way, you know, then I can.
If you want to move forward with the plan as it is presented to us right now.
And you price this, you know what you get yourself into. I just hate for you to come back once you price all these plants and say, oh, we changed them.
It's no choice.
Have you, have you actually run those numbers?
Yes, I, that's.
Because I did also, I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Has to be done, has to be done.
We're going to move forward with this plan as it is, okay?
And did the other, the other property owner sign the application?
Yes, he signed an affidavit number one, and I also had him sign an application.
He did sign the application.
He's seen this plan.
He has seen this plan, he's approved, yes.
Okay, so.
I can watch the shed, take all the debris away.
Okay. Okay. Can I ask you, what are you going to do with that pergola?
Again, I can dump, no choice.
It's a sad thing to hear, but.
Yes, that's why I said, this is, you know what I'm saying, but if you, I saw that, unfortunately, we're not going to.
Can you sell it? I, I, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not.
No, no, no.
Sorry, 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 sorry. It just feels bad for you, sir, that's all.
I'm hoping to do on my side, I'm hoping to use all the, any of the things that I have, and I can go, and we do it again.
Please note, you will need a certificate of zoning compliance if you move it on your property. We need to make sure it's not in the setback, so please come see planning and zoning if you do decide to go on your property.
You're going to put it within that, behind that red line, too. You need to come back and see it, so.
Do you have this survey? If people can't do this survey, you know, you have the proper line for the dimension now?
But you also have.
Step back.
You also have.
What's the setback?
Come see planning and zoning, that's not, this is inland wetlands.
You're going to.
Come see us in planning and zoning and we can help you get a permit for the pergola or a shed or anything else you want to do on your property.
No, they should have got it.
No, they shouldn't be already.
Yeah, but they have to get it released from the.
You still have to get a permit from planning.
Planning and zoning issue, so we'll stick to.
But I just want them to understand, they also have this hundred-foot wetland setback line.
Correct.
So you got to make sure if you're, if you're proposing to put it within that area, you got to put it on your plan and get an approval. See what I'm saying?
So, all right, Andrew.
Yes.
Assuming we're moving forward with the plan as presented.
Yes.
You've reviewed it, do you have any questions or concerns?
I don't have any concerns, I have three conditions if you choose to approve this plan. I have a few conditions of the approval that we could talk about in deliberations.
Okay. And starting over there with Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant based on what we have in front of us right now?
No, I think it's a good plan. I think I'm good.
Good.
Good, too. Any questions or comments from staff?
I have a question. Do you not understand enough, okay? The next step, I have to go to the building department now and explain to them what's the idea, the future, and then they got to come to a plan, so you have just.
Are you talking about if you want to do improvements on your property?
If you move the shed, to move the.
Yes, you have to come to not the building department, the planning and zoning department.
Good.
Start with us. You may have to get a building permit depending on the size of the shed, if you want to have electricity to it, you know, depending on what the details are. But yes, if you are building a structure on your property, you have to come to planning and zoning, the department. That doesn't mean you have to come to the commission. We can handle all those permits administratively, but we do need our due diligence to make sure you're in compliance.
Yeah, but it's just the way it is. Maybe you've been simply.
But now you're going to, you might run into issues with site coverage. You, you have to present to us the size of the sheds, where you're locating them, make sure that they are within the setbacks. So on that plan that you have, you'll show where you want those and where the pergola's going to go. We have to look at stormwater management, we have to look at lock coverage, so there are some zoning issues that you'll have to make sure that you're within our regulations as far as zoning goes.
I would suggest, though, as it is now, before you guys even start anything, come in, we can do a preliminary review, we'll grab the people that we need, we can sit down so we can manage expectations. But yes, if you're going to construct anything on your property, you have to get a planning and zoning permit.
Okay. You have a question, speak it.
No, I said, I'll call.
Set up an appointment with me and Thomas and, and, yes.
They come, is it us, they come to the.
No, you'll come, you'll come to town hall with your plan and once you show us where you're going to, then we'll issue you the permit that you need for that, and then once, and then when you're done putting it where you're saying that you're putting it, we will come out and inspect it to make sure it is where it's supposed to be.
Then just leave everything as it is.
Until then, leave everything as it is.
No, but we could get started now.
No, you can't, you, you need to, you need to guess, you need to wait until you have your permit in your hand.
Yes, yes, I understand that, okay. Any questions?
Any other questions for?
I make, well, you said you have conditions.
Well, you said.
Well, we have the, we, we need a motion, we need a motion to close the regular hearing and move it to deliberations.
Make a motion to close application hearing IWV-2024-04, file number 1504, close the regular hearing and move to deliberations.
We have a motion to close, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. When I.
All right, moving on. All right.
Marie, you, you don't have to, you're, yeah, you can go if you'd like, if you'd like to stay and hear this next one, you're more than welcome to stay and just call.
It will be more deliberations.
Yeah, we're going to vote on it. Wait till deliberations, okay?
To you.
That's up to you.
Not immediately.
Not immediately.
Later in the agenda, so it's up.
Moving on to IWC 2021-06R-A1, file number 137664 Cambridge, 4 Independence Drive, proposed modification to reduce net fill quantity and modify the method of wetland restoration. Astro Land Holdings LLC and Spacely Land Holdings LLC applicant, Mary Blackburn, Solely Engineering LLC representative, this is continued from June 11th meeting.
Now, wait, before you get started, can I read the exhibits into record? All the exhibits from the last meeting, which was 6/11, we received, it's the number 22, we received on 6/12. It was the time extension letter and it was submitted by Solely Engineering. Exhibit number 23, we received on the 20th, 6/2025. It was the response to comments regarding the fill, again, presented by Solely Engineering. Exhibit number 24, we received on 6/20, it was an email from a resident.
Exhibit number twenty-four, we received on six twenty, it was an email from a resident, uh. Exhibit number twenty-five, uh, received on six twenty was a response to comments by Solely Engineering. Exhibit number twenty-six, received on six twenty was a vernal pool monitoring plan submitted by William Kenny Associates. Exhibit number twenty-seven, received on six twenty-four twenty-five, uh, letter from Partner Engineering and Science. Exhibit number twenty-eight, received on the twenty-fifth, six twenty-five twenty-five, uh, groundwater and fill concerns, uh, letter from Peter Metropolis. We received it on the twenty-fifth, I guess the date of the document was six twenty-three. Exhibit number twenty-nine, received on six twenty-five twenty-five, uh, letter from John Insal, uh, or I'm sorry, a resume of John Insal. Exhibit number twenty-nine. Received on six twenty-five was a letter from Rockhead Materials. And exhibit number thirty-one, received on six twenty-five twenty-five was N E M tracking ticket presented by Joel Green.
Um, I am gonna state one thing, that the letter from Peter Metropolis, he requested to be read out loud into the record, we don't typically do that for public letters, however, because he's the actual intervenor, um, I do believe it's within your position, we would like to allow that to be done, uh, we can do that at the appropriate time.
By accuracy, how long is this?
Three pages, it is on, I mean, it is on, uh, on this, on the website as a, as an exhibit, but I do have it here, it's three-page.
I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was in your, your city.
Okay, okay, anything else we need to read through, okay?
Um, I would like to just remind the commission that the public near, the public hearing needs to close tonight, statutorily, it needs to close tonight, um. That's all.
Okay. Where's yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everyone, uh, for the record, my name is Steve Finn, I'm an attorney, I represent the applicants, uh, in connection with this, uh, wetlands, uh, request to amend, uh, fire. I don't think we need to go over, uh, what we've discussed at the last two hearings, uh, the last time we were here, we had really narrowed down through your efforts and your, um, your questions to us, what else you need to hear from the applicant with regard to this application, and my list is the following, it consists of three items, you wanted more information about the pumping and well monitoring system that's gonna be used to rehydrate wells two and two, again, as a reminder, the only issue here with regard to this remediation plan is how best to rehydrate wells two and vernal pool two, all the other wetlands and vernal pools were not impacted by the over excavation, and that's been well established. In addition, the second item you requested from us was information about the impact of the pH of the well water on the rehydration, and, uh, I believe we've submitted information on that, Mr. Kenny is here as well, who can assist, uh, with any questions about that, and then lastly, on my list, is documentation confirming my client's efforts to find fill that would meet the material acceptance procedure, again, the very stringent material acceptance procedure, uh, pursuant to the excavation and fill permit issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and our inability to find that kind of fill, uh, and also, uh, to establish that, as we did the last time, that it, it would cost an unbelieving expense to try to source fill that meets that material acceptance procedure. Now, in a minute, I'm gonna turn things over to Kevin Solely, uh, Bill Kenny, our end of wetlands expert, also on Zoom is Derek Jones, who is our licensed environmental tech, uh, licensed environmental, um, professional, thank you, uh, he's been involved in this project for many, many years, um, after that, it's my plan to discuss the submission yesterday that you deferred from Partner Inc., uh, submitted by Mr. Metropolis, which contains many inaccuracies, which also seeks in large part to have this commission revisit issues that this commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission already fully reviewed and made decisions about back in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Again, I can't stress enough that we're not recreating a wheel here, we're just seeking to modify an existing permit and approval both from this commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission in order to best remediate this property. It, it's not proper for the, Mr. Metropolis to try to have you go back and revisit issues that were already decided after, as Mr. Stewart can attest to, months and months of hearings, uh, and I'll get into more detail about that, now before I turn over to Kevin, I do want to speak a minute about the status of the intervenor. I raised the point that what, uh, Mr. Metropolis, who is his attorney, is trying to do is, is rely on an intervening petition that they filed back in twenty twenty-one, based on our other application, that was approved by this commission, and at that time, this commission decided that that intervention petition was not fulfilled, they did not establish all the grounds they claimed would in fact be embargoed, they're now back here relying on the exact same petition, that's not proper, and therefore, they don't have intervenor status for this, uh, modification, and until they file a specific intervention petition addressed to this modification, they are not an intervenor. So I raised that point before, and I'm raising it again for the record, how you want to deal with it, that's up to you, I will acknowledge, I will acknowledge that Mr. Metropolis isn't a butter, and therefore, he certainly has standing to address you, but intervention does convey somewhat of a different status, and, uh, and, and my point is, is he doesn't get that raised status, uh, based on his pending intervention petition. With that, thank you for your attention, I'm the chairman of. Thanks, Steve.
Oh, no, it's, it's okay, I can, uh. Thank you, uh, Agent Alton, I recommend Kevin Solely, uh, with Solely Engineering, office is located right here in Monroe with five Main Street, so, uh, at the end of the last hearing, we were able to kind of get down to what this commission was really looking for, kind of some more clarity around what was proposing and requesting for approval, um, so we did, uh, make some minor revisions to the plans to really just add some additional detail, um, we had shown the location of the pump, but what we did is we worked with, we did a couple of things, we actually had a well driller out there to talk about the, their recognition location on that, so we have identified and shown on plants that precise location for those wells, they're located right here. Right here, um, and then again, as we discussed, the, the quantity of wells is really dependent upon the yield, we don't know the yield until we drill those wells, but they were accomplished, and we could do essentially plus, um, one up to three, and those would be, that would be sufficient for, I think, to meet our designed demand for water to rehydrate these wells. Um, we also provided, we also worked to further establish, um, the exact spacing and sizing of the solar panels required to operate these pumps, we identified actually, uh, a primary location, um, right in this location here, and we also identified a potential secondary location, um, a little bit, uh, kind of up the hill, a little bit closer to the well itself, and that's located here, um, in addition to that, we also provided some more details on the equipment itself, we discussed this at the last team race, but the, uh, the solar pack for the well control, the well watch solar power kit to make sure the wells be monitored, we included those information on our plans, we also have the, a monitoring well that we're proposing to put within the wetlands themselves, those are actually battery controlled, and the maintenance for those is included in the, um, report that was provided by Mr. Kenny, um, we have those details incorporated in our plans, we also have, obviously, we also include some of the details for the water level monitoring device, um, the well watch solar power kit, and also the detail for the water, uh, installation for the rehydration, we are proposing to bury that, the frost depth, to ensure against frost.
What is the life expectancy of all that equipment, and I'm sure it's different for, for different components, but you have some of that information in there?
Uh, I mean, the, I mean, a typical well will last thirty years.
No, I'm talking about the, the solar panels and, like, all those different components, there's a life expectancy.
Well, I mean, solar panels have a life expectancy up to thirty years as well, there's some degradation over time, but again, those will be, um, monitored for this to ensure, you know, cleaned and maintained as needed to ensure their efficacy, and then again, the goal for this is to, um, a future application, we disconnect those solar panels and connect right to a building for permanent use, but, um, we're, we're, we're more than comfortable and confident that the equipment will be able to be maintained, and then if it needs to be replaced, it could be replaced as needed, uh, the, I can't, obviously, we recommend that this commission adopt conditions that, you know, have reporting back to this commission on the basis that, of the frequency that you deem appropriate, considering the reports that are provided, the maintenance is being done correctly, every day, everything's operating correctly, et cetera, and again, both the wells, um, the, and the well monitoring system, those can be monitored remotely, in addition to the, um, the well, the, the, the water level monitoring devices within the vernal pool, those are also monitored remotely as well, and would be expected to be maintained as part of the same schedule and structure, again, it's just, it's low of that detail for both the water level monitoring devices and the well watch solar power. There was also some discussion and, um, you know, regarding the volumes of materials, there were, uh, you know, obviously, store reports provided by N Safe and Bill Heiple, and as part of that, his reporting, he talked about a fifty-eight thousand cubic yards mixed debris pile, and one of them is the lights, the commission, I know it provides the planning and zoning as well, but the site itself, in its former condition, had, um, a lot of material inside, um, there was about approximately fifty-eight thousand yards of mixed debris pile that was located in this portion of the site, this is what was monitored and, um, managed by, uh, Mr. Heiple, who was hired by a third party by the wetland commission and zoning commission, but then there were also substantial stockpiles of needed material quarry screens that were, um, in this location here, and then actually stockpiled along the eastern edge of the site here, so, and again, in accordance with the previous approval, all of that needed material, that those quarry screens, that first of all, the material had been tested previously and deemed clean, um, that is the material that was placed in the deepest reaches of the northern portion of the site, that was placed in accordance with the previous approvals up to elevation four eleven, which was above groundwater, and then that mixed debris pile was then also placed above that, so any discrepancies regarding volumes, again, we're, we're, we're doing calculations based on a mass comparison of former surveys and current surveys, so, so those, those volume calculations, you know, when you actually go and place and compact, there's gonna be some, some shrinkage, there's maybe some swell in the stockpile, so we're very confident, comfortable with the volumes that we've justified to, um, as part of this here, so, um, and then, and I also believe that there were, there were some questions about the seventy-five yards, those actually came in from our applicant, provided, you know, for the commission that you've been referring, that those, that actually, it wasn't, it was actually from other, the, the site that the applicant had any pain in connection with, so again, that was all clean and dated material, anything open for the, the, the. And again, I think the commission should take solace in the fact that there wasn't a third-party person out there witnessing, observing, it gave clean reports to this commission and planning and zoning, and all the activity that took place out there today has been done, um, you know, in accordance with all of our previous conditions and approvals that were established as part of the last hearing, um, and again, I think, so where we are today is at a much better, uh, place than where it was previously, the work has been done impeccably in accordance with all the conditions, the reporting has been provided by this commission, um, and, you know, we're, 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 again, so this application is essentially to modify the, the means of which we're rehydrating that wells, we, we are more than confident that this means will be, um, uh, will, will be successful, um, and to, and as an additional, um, uh, proposal for this commission consideration, obviously, we're proposing to create another acre of wetlands on the property in that southeast corner of the site right here, so, so with that, um, as again, we have, uh, Bill Kenny here, if there's any questions regarding any of his modern plans, we also have Derek Jones, um, online as well, if there's any questions, uh, regarding, um, whether it's the letter that was, that was just issued by the environment, regarding the, I'll tell you the site. Good evening, Bill Kenny, Principal Wayne Kenny Associates, a very professional wetland scientist, wetland scientist, and let's keep working, okay, uh, what we provided to you for tonight was two documents, one is a monitor plan for the. Focusing on getting the pool to a length where everything's worth the breeding and development of amphibians, and to have that, you need certain depth of water per a certain period of time, so, uh, our monitoring focuses on actually going out and monitoring for three years during the breeding season to see if those animals are there, if they're breeding and developing. We're also gonna monitor the depth of water and the duration of the pond, and, uh, and we're, we're fortunate enough to have Vernal Pool Four, which is, as you know, a short distance to the east, we're gonna use that as a control wetland, and we're gonna monit-, monitor that in the same way, and so there's two types of monitoring, there's on-the-ground, um, inventories for the animals and for eggs and, uh, juveniles developing, but there's also this, uh, water level monitor that's being installed that'll give us water levels in both the control wetland and Vernal Pool and the restored Vernal Pool, so we can, uh, affect those water levels, and, uh, for the first three years, we will adjust, if needed, the pump rates, because, uh, we're, we're approaching this from two different directions, where, first thing that we did was estimate, we did a calculation, estimate how much water we thought is needed to get that depth of water and that kind of water, so we estimated that, came up with a certain amount of pumping and certain amount of days per month, um, but we're actually dwell during the breeding season and make sure the water's there at that time, if it's a little too high or too low, we'll adjust those pumping rates, but the initial estimate we did was to get us in the ballpark, and then we're gonna monitor it for three years, calibrate it, and we'll use Vernal Pool Four to help us with that as well, uh, and then the water level monitors, they stay there forever, so that once a year, right before the breeding season, you go out, inspect those monitoring wells, you replace anything that needs to be replaced, replace the battery, uh, if it's been damaged in some way or something, it's not functioning, you want to replace the instrument itself, that provides data remotely, uh, to a software system that will be monitored, and once a year, that information will be provided to you. First three years, we'll provide monthly reports to you during the breeding season, uh, so that'll be for the restoration of the vernal pool, and the wetland that's being proposed, about an acre of new wetland, to provide an added level of comfort that the wetland and water resource resources on the property are, as better, better than what had previously occurred to some level, we're, so we're creating a whole new acre, but that, that situation will also be monitored for three years, and there's a monitoring that's on the drawing for that, and both the Vernal Pool monitoring and the wetland monitoring, the new wetland. Specific objectives, we say, these are the objectives, we say, these are the standards we need to meet, that someone can look at and say, okay, the objective's been met or not, so we have standards, and we have the, uh, yeah, the, the phases are gonna be monitored to ensure the standard is met, it's all spelled out, and includes writing the board, of course, to you, so that you have that in there.
What happens in year four, and five, and ten, and twenty, like, you said we're gonna monitor it for three years, and that's great, but then, then what?
So, the water level continues being monitored forever, and we'll review that and, and, and report to the other city, so for amphibians, we're gonna see.
So, for amphibians, we're going to see, all right, these are the depths we need, both the needs breeding, breeding and development. And that's the duration we need. So, in the future, beyond, we'll have that information, you know, we'll schedule that to occur right during the breeding season. So, if for some, something needs to be adjusted, we can adjust it right then. I think after three years of calibration, it'll be solid information to, to see the success. Well, actually, we're measuring the success in the pool itself, but we'll also be comparing it to the adjacent pool that's in control, the undisturbed pool.
Right, but if we're not monitoring it after three years, and something happens with the equipment, then?
We are, we will, we're going to look, do a, look back once a year and see what's, what's going on, and then if there's a issue, then we fix. I understand, and that's why we're offering this one acre of new wetland construction as an added level of assurance with regard to the wetland and water resource. And again, that, for a whole thing, the damage that exists there today, nothing will ever back to exactly what it was, not what we've been approved, not what we're proposing. It's impossible to put it back to exactly what it was. But I think that what we did find with the whole thing that occurred since the last approval, the two critical things was that Vernal Pool can hold water if the water is delivered to it, because there was concern that maybe there was fracturing of the bedrock from the mining that caused that to not be able to hold water. But it would hold water, and when it did hold water during breeding season, the animals were migrating there and laying their eggs there. So, we have evidence that it will function in that capacity, we just need to get the water there. So, we can talk about whether you think additional monitoring, that three years for calibration is appropriate, and then, and only after that. And then, there were some questions about, right, there were questions about the water quality, now it might affect the success of the, of the pool using groundwater. I had indicated the primary, the primary concern I had was with regard to pH. Seems like someone back in 1984, Connecticut College had the same question in their mind. How would pH affect the success for breeding and development of amphibians in Vernal Pool? So, Connecticut College did a very interesting study of Vernal Pools on their campus back in 1984. They monitored breeding and development under a variety of pH levels, and they found from pH 4 up to like six and a half, that there was no impact on the breeding success. You get below pH 4, then you start to see some degradation of the breeding success. There was still breeding and there was still development, but it wasn't as healthy and successful in that range, 4 to 6.5. And our groundwater typically falls within that range, and we certainly will be testing the low water, and if it's not within that range, we can adjust it.
What is the pH of our groundwater right now, average, say?
It, it falls, generally, it's below 6.5. It's certain. I don't believe, I mean, below 4 is quite acidic.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I don't, I don't believe it falls below that many years. And that, it was that level 4 that they found, where the problems started to occur.
Understood.
Mr. Kenny, you made the comment before that nothing would get the wetlands back to their exact original state. Is it your professional opinion that this amendment application would get them closer to their original state, or the fill, the original application approval?
I truly believe that they're very comparable. They're, the development, the existing permit calls for water from a developed landscape to be collected and drained to the pool, that if it assumes, in the short term, it's a restoration, so the development site's got to be in that, but it, I think everyone understands that the site will be developed at some point. So, the water will be collected, it'll be cleaned through standard stormwater manager measures, and then, so that's one way to get water there, or take it from a well, the groundwater.
I would just add, from a volume standpoint, this methodology will restore the volume more consistent with the former elevations, because we know what the former grades were, we know what that volume was. Our system was designed based on, our pumping system was designed based on that watershed, that contributing watershed that would naturally rehydrate this well. The filling application is currently before us, doesn't restore the entirety of that watershed. So, even if that was constructed and left, and it's just a fill condition, there would be superficial volume to it, but it was not commensurate with the volume that was going to it before. This methodology allows us to control that volume and match the previous volume that was going to that well, much more succinctly and accurately than what the filling operation would have done from a volume standpoint.
Yeah, you've mentioned volume a number of times, you talk about gallons, but I don't see gallons per minute. And honestly, I have to, I have to protest that there's a lot of information that we got really, really late, and there's an 839-page document that I just couldn't go through prior to this meeting, I don't know if you're even aware of it.
Yeah, of course not.
If we didn't, if we didn't go looking for it, we wouldn't know it was there. So, I'm just not.
Which, which, which information, the only, the only, the details we presented tonight from an engineer's standpoint, details for the solar panels, the fencing around it, the pellet, the pumps, that was the only new addition. There was, there were questions regarding the, the testing that was done, trying to source it. That was voluminous, which was the, but again, our application is to modify what was approved to reduce the fill requirement and rehydrate with wells. The hundreds of pages that was submitted that you're referring to just was documentation as to how difficult it's been to source this material from.
We'll, 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 we'll talk about that later, but, but what I was referring to or asking about is, again, I have tables here about potential gallons per minute, and I'm just wondering what size you're talking about.
What we're submitting, Mr. Kenny's report that had the information was submitted probably six weeks ago in the year. We, so that information has been in the record for quite some time, for several meetings. And we reviewed that, I think, two meetings ago. Oh, the pumping, which we went over in one of the previous hearings.
I've never heard, Kevin, I've never heard of a specific gallon model that you're going after, size of the solar panels, you know, I just, this is better, but I'm, and I, I'm sorry, I thought you just put in a plan that was more formal and more definite.
We just provided the specific details regarding the well equipment, the well monitoring equipment, and the water level monitors within the Vernal Pools, and the solar panel system to power those wells. It's the only new information that was added. But Mr. Kenny's report, she can touch on now, that talks about the floor rate, that was April 23 issue, and built for wetlands.
And just to clarify, you did get, there were several exhibits today, but it wasn't from the applicant, it was from the intervener. So, there was a bunch of last minute stuff today, but it wasn't from the applicant, it was from the intervener.
So, the comments on fill?
There was a lot of information about fill. You're going to, can you give an exhibit number?
I was, I was looking for more specific information about the system, but I guess we're not going to be able to get there with a, you know, gallon per minute.
Well, we can, we can certainly do that, that is the record that was submitted.
While you're talking and while you're switching off, please state who's speaking or staff to be able to follow.
Sure. Bill Kenny, I'm going to just briefly explain the one-page document that we provided in April, it's dated April 23. The title is groundwater pumping rates scheduled for wetland slash Vernal Pool 2 hydration. And we, we used actual precipitation data from over 25 years and took it for each month, and came up with a full precip each month, because things are going to vary seasonally, particularly with the vapour transpiration. And then, so that was our input, how much rain is coming down on the ground. We looked at the amount that's going to be lost through vapour transpiration, mostly during the growing season. So, the water table and the ponding is going to build up starting after the leaves fall in the fall, and then build up over the winter. Ponds are still filling, we subtracted out vapour transpiration during the growing season. And then, we, so we ended up with a volume per month. We had a certain amount of rain that came in, we lost a certain amount, and we ended up with a volume per month. And then we said, all right, let's, we just said, let's use a rate of 15 gallons per minute, and if we're pumping 25 hours a day, we divided that into the, we came up with a rate per day based on 15 gallons per minute. And we said, how many days per month are we going to have to pump to get the volume that we estimated for each month? So, this table provides those calculations, and it gives you rainfall each month, the loss of that and transpiration each month, and then the amount of days pumping at 15 gallons per minute. And this is conservative, we assume, so we're going to provide more water to the system and, because we're assuming we're not, the water's going to, if the watershed is there, it's coming down through the soil, it's hitting some bedrock and making its way to the well. And, and this is where the monitoring comes in, those three years, we're going to, we don't want these pools to have water and then all year long, where you might end up with a fish population that then, as a predator, those fish eat the eggs and you don't have success with your breeding. So, that three years is going to figure out, do we have enough water, do we have too much water, and we'll calibrate the pumping. Is 15 gallons per minute too much or too little, and we'll adjust that. But this at least gets us in the ballpark to get going and figure out how many levels we think we might need.
So, if the size is insufficient, you'll just increase the sizing, and, I mean?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else for the guys?
Thank you. Yeah, this is Trey Finn, for the record. Two quick things. Yes, this, since this is the last hearing before it has to close, the proper procedure, as I think you all know, is that we get to the last, so then I see Mr. Eric Rehnen in the audience, it should be his turn now to address what he wants to address with you, and then we can respond, and then hopefully we can close the hearing. Before I get your reaction to that, I do want to reiterate what I said about the intervinor, I'm quoting T you from decisions from the Superior Court Judge, appeal that is the profit court, actually, the excavation fill permit that they appealed. The excavation fill permit involves the exact same project as you all approved. We couldn't do that remediation project without getting an excavation fill project, so the exact same plan that was presented and approved by you was then taken over to the planning zoning commission, and they approved the exact same plan. And the court, in its decision, this was issued in around May 21st, about a month or so ago, the court said, inter, intermaintained and is verified pleading and during the public hearing that the issuance of the excavation fill permit will have a negative impact upon the air, water, and other natural resources of the state. The judge then states in his opinion, this claim is not well taken, and therefore, I submit to you that the questions that are raised by this intervention petition were not already decided by this commission the last time, but were also decided by Superior Court, was determined that intervention petition does not meet the criteria for establishing any environmental damage whatsoever. So, with that, as I said, Mr. Metropolis, as an abiding property owner, certainly has a right to address this commission, but it's not as an intervener. So, with that, I will leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, to decide about proper procedure. I do, we submit that at this point, we presented, if you have any questions, more questions for our team, please ask them whenever you like, especially now if you prefer, but if not, then, then it's Mr. Metropolis's term, so to speak.
And we also have the public has an opportunity to speak as well, so we'll give you guys an opportunity, kind of at the end, to wrap it all up if you need to.
Thank you.
Intervener or public first?
I would go with you.
Okay. If the intervener wants to come up?
Intervener.
Intervener, please.
That's okay. I'm ready to go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff. Once again, my name is Joel Brey, practice law, or law since the grade of rose, here before you this evening, on behalf of Peter Metropolis trustee, who's the owner of the abiding property on Timothy Hill Road. You know, I'm going to be relatively brief tonight. I do, we do have an expert witness that we would like to produce for the benefit of the commission. We have submitted a letter. I do want to address a point by Commissioner Smith, which I think was well taken, and we did submit a lot of material, but the only purpose of that material is to provide backup on some of the claims in the letter by my client. And certainly, we're not asking this commission to go through all the delivery tickets, but we thought that it was important that the record contain documents and the tickets that substantiate some of the loads that were.
Do you mind summarizing some of those, or give us the highlights, because there were a lot of pages, so.
You know, that's a great segue, because I'd be happy to read Mr. Metropolis's letter, which is, basically encapsulating a lot of my presentation, and it's, it really won't take us any longer, but.
You guys want to hear it?
Sure.
Okay.
I just, yeah, I'll have some closing remarks, but if I can, I'll, I'll take care of it if you'd like.
For the record, this is exhibit number 28.
Thank you.
And you were not given hard copies of that letter, so you guys don't have hard copies at your desk. Oh, good for Kerry, look at you guys.
So, it is a letter to the inland wetlands commission. It's dated June 23rd, and it's, "Dear members of the inland wetlands, I am writing to raise serious concerns during abuse of asphalt buildings and reinforced concrete as fill material at the unauthorized quarry located at 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive in Monroe, Connecticut, collectively referred to as 644. This site lies within a DAA classified groundwater area, which under Connecticut environmental regulations demands the highest level of protection for both public drinking water and ecological health. Use of demolition debris at this location without oversight, documentation, or site-specific testing is deeply troubling and may result in irreversible environmental harm." And there's a section, "Hazardous fill and questionable origins. The materials in question, asphalt millings under four inches and reinforced concrete, do not meet the definition of clean fill. These materials often contain petroleum byproducts, heavy metals, toxic compounds such as polysyphilic aromatic hydrocarbons, PA agents. Many originated from East Coast demolition sites known for contamination, including asbestos. Examples of source locations include Stratford High School. 625 truckloads of rebar laden concrete was imported from an asbestos dumping site. This material was hauled by demolition contractor American Environmental, which has faced previous fines and has issued a ban from engaging in public work due to alleged illegal dumping. Company President Jose Bermejo has categorically denied that any material was overset to 644 by his firm, and I would refer the commission to the tickets. That's not in the law." Continuing on, ONG Bridgeport Recycling, 1225 Seaview Avenue. This was an unlicensed and illegal recycling facility forced to close and remove its leftover stockpiles. 57 Gower Road, New Canaan. Material described as tar coated cinder block. 57 Gower Road, New Canaan, material described as tar coated cinder block. 2730 Stratford Avenue, that's Wade's Garage, brown field with petroleum pollution and prior enforcement action. 300 Orland Street, Bridgeport, site with contaminated soils. 333 Main Street, Danbury, News Times Building, brown filled field with documented soil contamination. 230 East Avenue, Norwalk, Norfield Electronics, listed hazardous waste site. Bridgeport Hat Factory, historic brown field with known mercury contamination. These materials were imported en masse, approximately 250,000 tons by John Kimble, ONG Industries, Arnold Carpe. It is especially concerning that ONG, a company known for selling clean fill, would pay to dispose of this material unless it was unmarketable due to contamination. In fact, ONG was issued a cease and desist order in 2006 for operating an illegal and unlicensed recycling facility at its Seaview Avenue site in Bridgeport. After a prolonged legal battle, a judge ordered the company to remove the debris. Ultimately, 107,655 tons of that material were transported illegally dumped at 644, bypassing environmental controls entirely. Then there's a section violation of state regulations. Under Connecticut law, clean fill with just trace amounts of detectable pollutants, destruction and demolition, C and D, activities must be transported to a licensed landfill or permitted by a walled facility. The only exception is for reuse on the property where the demolition occurred. Once materials are moved off-site, as they clearly were here, the receiving site contractor and holder must maintain a documented chain of custody, including environmental testing records. No such documentation has been produced or has been provided for the 644 operation. Given the site's commercial operation and the substantial volume of fill, evidence of site mismanagement necessitates immediate soil and groundwater testing. Any material originating from a brownfield site in Connecticut is presumed contaminated and is subject to regulations requiring handling solely at a licensed disposal facility. Therefore, the use of such materials at an unregulated quarry in a GAA zone, especially given the lack of records and evidence of mismanagement, represents a significant violation of Connecticut environmental law. While the commission may not regulate risk to public health, while the commission may not regulate fill composition directly, it is tasked with protecting Monroe's inland wetlands from pollution, including surface runoff and groundwater discharge. The plan to discharge water from an onsite well into adjacent wetlands without testing raises major red flags. I strongly urge the commission to require independent laboratory testing of the groundwater before any discharge is permitted. Testing should screen for polysylic aromatic hydrocarbons, PAHs, heavy metals, petroleum derivatives, asbestos fibers, and mercury. This site is not a remediation project, it is an unlicensed profit driven landfill. The scale of activity, the nature of the material, and the lack of documentation suggest deliberate circumvention of Connecticut's environmental regulations. I respectfully urge the commission to take immediate action by, one, requiring comprehensive groundwater testing by an independent lab. Two, investigating the origin and composition of fill materials already deposited. Three, referring this matter to deep in the Department of Public Health for enforcement and oversight. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter, for your commitment to safeguarding Monroe's natural resources and public health. Sincerely, Peter Metropolis, 36 Timothy Hill Road. So, the, obviously the thrust of that letter is the overall G E groundwater. You know, the mission asked a lot of great questions on reporting and what happens with monitoring after three years. And my thought was that this applicant has failed in the most fundamental way to do what it said it was going to do just three years ago. And again, I understand that this commission does not directly monitor groundwater, but in this case, this presents, and the applicant sort of suggested this is a continuation, this has already been approved, this has already been passed on by this commission. No, this is different. Now you are pumping, now instead of creating that cap filling, creating that cap, creating those contours where the wetlands would be naturally filled, we are now in a situation where literally the groundwater that my client is concerned about being contaminated is going to be pumped into the wetlands that are directly within the jurisdiction of the I really have to comment that the applicant really hasn't responded, and I know, Mr. Lindstrom, that you weren't here for the last meeting, but at the meeting before that, you had very clearly asked the applicant to demonstrate the lack of available fill that could be used to satisfy the original approval by this commission. And I find it interesting that all that the applicant has produced is its own testing of the material it found at those sites using equipment that it had. And really, at the end of the day, and I know where this is going, we heard Mr. Stone at the last hearing, and we heard a consultant hired by the applicant talk about how difficult it is to get fill. But the, the answer is, at the end of the day, and I think as we've learned, this is all about economics, and it's all about not wanting to buy, acquire, to purchase the fill that would be required to complete the job. And the applicant is basically asking for a windfall, an economic windfall. That's what it is. And I, I feel like listening to the applicant, they'll say just about anything to satisfy that because it's economically driven, and, and that's with all due respect, and, you know, I respect their consultants, but basically, this is an economic plea. And I think that the, at the very least, if you're applying to do that at this point, and again, we have suggested in the past, what's the rush? Where's the rush? Why aren't they, why aren't they going after some of these measures to restore those wetlands while giving it another year or giving it another two years to see what happens with the availability of fill? But under any circumstances, I think that Mr. Metropolis's point is well taken on testing of the groundwater. And we have produced a Mr., to satisfy some of the concerns that were raised, Mr. Metropolis did hire Partner Engineering and Science, John Insal, and I would like to introduce him just briefly. I do have hard copies of his letter that I'd like to present to the commission, and he is online this evening, so if he can just briefly make a presentation to the commission. Mr. Insal, are you online and available?
He's asking me. He's.
Yep.
A lot of talk.
He didn't ask.
He's asking if he can speak.
Can you hear? Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Insal, I've submitted Mr. Insal's professional resume into the record, but for the benefit of the public or for the commissioners, it was submitted late today around CNN, can you just very briefly describe your education, training, and experience?
I have a, good evening, my name is John Insal from Partner Engineering. I'm a licensed environmental professional. I have 38 years of experience, predominantly in Connecticut since 1990, and have had a LEP license for 25 years since the year 2000. I've been retained by the trust to review the existing situation and provide my thoughts and opinion as to the status of the project. And I agree that with Mr. Metropolis, that really the constituent, the chemical constituents of the fill are not really known. And I note that Bill Hippel, who was monitoring the fill being brought to the site, as detailed in a media article several years ago, was using the sniff test to screen materials and, and approve materials, which is, you know, totally unscientific, it's not analytical, it is simply grabbing a handful of dirt, sniffing it, and saying, I don't smell, smell anything, bring in the load. You know, that's not going to detect contaminants, and it's by no means capable of determining whether or not the fill contains contaminants. And so, you know, given that, and the fact that the groundwater is going to be used to hydrate wetlands, some of which is going to ultimately flow onto the intervenor's property at 36 Timothy Hill Road, I really think that, that sampling of the groundwater is necessary to make sure that the, you know, they, that what's in the groundwater is not going to inadvertently impact the wetland. Should there be hazardous substances in the groundwater from the fill, that would be maintaining a source of pollution to the waters of the state under state statute 22A 427. And at that point, there's a real problem, so, which is not going to be easy or inexpensive to rectify. So, you know, I think it really makes a lot of sense before, you know, you're going to, this is going to amount to millions and millions of gallons over 20 or 30 years if there are contaminants in the groundwater, and it's found out 10 years from now.
I think we just.
Insal, you can cut out.
It's got to be on his end.
Look like he's still connected.
Looks like he's still on there. It says it's.
He's listed.
My concern and, can you hear me?
Yeah, you lost her for a minute.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I have a low bandwidth this evening. So I'd like to voice my concern, and I'd like to refer you to my letter if you'd like to look at my opinion in greater detail.
Can you give us just a quick summary of your, your letter and what your recommendations are?
What, what I just went through was the summary of the letter, I'm recommending four seasonal quarters of groundwater sampling for a comprehensive suite of chemicals that are typical groundwater analytes, which are looked, which are used to evaluate pollution. I haven't done the calculation, but, you know, a continuous pumping of groundwater over 20 or 30 years will amount to a very large discharge of, you know, hundreds of millions of gallons to wetland areas. And I think that the, the analyte list that I provided is, is adequate to screen the groundwater for most of the contaminants that might be present in fill. I'd also like to point out that the applicant's consultant, WSP, prepared a May 6, 2025 letter, which kind of, you know, actually reinforces our point at the expense of the applicant, where Mr. Jones says that urban development projects that are the most abundant source of fill materials in our region invariably exhibit detectable pollutants. Combined with the fact that they've only been able to find 70 cubic yards of clean fill since, kind of, you know, raises the question, how, so, so if they can't find clean fill now, what about the 248,000 tons of fill which was placed before that? You know, did all of a sudden clean fill become unavailable after that? And I think the, you know, the answer is actually the opposite. There probably is hazardous substances in, in the fill materials as Mr. Jones alludes to in his letter.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Insal?
Do you have any question?
I have a question.
Hold yourself. One. You guys have any questions? Staff, have any questions? Do you, are you, have anything else to present?
I do, but if there are questions to be asked, then maybe I'll yield to the questions by the.
For the record, this is Attorney Finn. Mr. Insal, when were you first contacted?
Address all your questions to us.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, my first question that I'd like to address to Mr. Insal, and this is based on the fact that this letter was just submitted yesterday, and then a subsequent piece of paper was submitted today. I'd like to know when he was first hired to work on this project.
Okay. Go ahead.
Bear with me, I'm just looking at my first contact, May 20th, 2025.
I'm sorry, I missed that answer, I apologize.
May 20th, 2025, a month ago.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know what documentation Mr. Insal reviewed in connection with rendering, writing this letter.
Would like to know what, what documentation you were able to review before you prepared this letter.
The documentation I reviewed was provided by my client and consisted of various waste disposal manifests and other historical information regarding the property.
Sorry, what kind of historical information about the property?
Some articles that were published, the WSP letter, some of the exhibits which have been submitted, which show tonnage of import material, pricing sheets, agendas of past meetings from the inland wetland commission, some videos of past inland wetland commission and planning and zoning meetings.
Did you review the entire previous record?
Hold on a second, we're, we're getting so deep into the weeds here, like.
Trying to get to a point.
Okay, then, let's get to the point, because I feel like we're dancing around, so.
Okay.
So Chairman, could I ask, so we're spending a lot of time talking about the pollutants, and I do not want to downgrade that, but is that pertinent to the application?
It's really not, that's kind of why I was hoping to get this record.
I do not want, I do not want to degrade what that means.
But it's not part of the purview of this commission.
What are we going to do with that?
If it's going into the end of the well.
It, it, right, it, it could be, but I, I, that's why I'm hoping to get, get a little clarity on where you're going with this, because we are getting really into the nitty gritty here, so.
Well, I, I think we'd like to know whether Mr. Insal reviewed the voluminous testing results that were submitted to this commission and the planning and zoning commission in connection with the prior approvals, which showed that there were no contaminants to be concerned about on this property.
Right, and all that information is already on record. So I understand what he's, I hear what he's saying, I'm not telling you I agree or disagree with it, but I see what's in the record already.
I think the concern is that in both Mr. Metropolis's letter and in Mr. Insal's letter, they were, they referenced that there was no testing on this material, and they're worried it's, it's contaminated, and the record shows that there was substantial testing done of all this material, of all the material that had been imported previously by the prior runner, and the groundwater is part of the prior application and approval, and it was all deemed to be clean. And so, so my question is, based on his letter and his summary he gave, it didn't seem like he reviewed that before.
Whether he did or not, it, the record shows that there was all that testing, you guys have presented all that information. All we have is a letter here, and it's valid to ask, to wonder where he may or may not have gotten that information from, but we also have information on the record that shows that you guys have submitted, here's the history, here's the testing, here's all the information. So I understand where you're going with that.
Okay, I, I, I don't. Okay, I, I, I don't need to ask any more questions. I, I will have some specific remarks to someone who's concluded that Mr. Soli was well, but. We'll get that during our rebuttal.
Right, that's fine. And, and to both you guys, like, let's kind of tone down the, the back and forth, let's stick to the facts and, you know, hopefully we can get out of here at a reasonable hour this evening, so.
Understood, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I haven't done any back and forth. I'm just stating, you know, where we are, but.
Does he agree?
For the record.
For the record.
Joel Brady again, for the record. All of the material has not been tested for the applicant to suggest that all the material that was brought on the site. One of the purposes of putting those manifests in is to demonstrate that there were materials brought in, impacted at Brownfield sites and they were used to fill this site. So there was testing done, admittedly, and there was a report on that. We can't test on the site. But to suggest that all the materials were tested is simply not true. And, you know, broad sweeping generalization.
Right, but if you don't present specific evidence that shows you know for a fact that this particular truckload of material was dumped there without testing, I don't think it's wise for you to say, we know for a fact that it was.
Well, we, we know that it came from the impacted from Brownfield sites. You have the tickets. And that's what, that's what.
That ticket doesn't necessarily mean it was specifically dumped for like, it, it, it's a receipt. I, I don't know that it's a valid, accurate receipt because there, there's no testimony to verify what you're putting in front of us is accurate. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just, you, you need to corroborate it.
Well, let's try this then. Let's try this approach and I appreciate your confidence and that's valid. But let's try this. There is an approval in place right now that requires the site to be graded, filled and remediated in a certain way, to be filled. This applicant, this applicant has come in and has asked to change that method now to not have to do the majority of the filling and to now do this pipe system. Why is it incumbent on me? I can't test the ground materials right now. I can't get you the information that you're looking for. But what I cannot understand is why is this commission saying, because my client and this consultant are saying that the groundwater should be tested. But it seems to me that, well, here we are in the eleventh hour. It is the applicant who has not come in, it is part of their application and said, we have tested the water that we're asking you to let us pump into the wetland. So if you're saying I didn't produce that, the information showing that that material is contaminated, I would say I can't, but it's not my burden. Here, they're asking to change the method. The applicant is, and I'm sure they're going to come up with a lot of clever responses. Use all these sweeping generalities such as all the materials tested. But at the end of the day, when they're asking you pump groundwater into the wetlands that you are charged with protecting, the first thing they should be providing is by, from WSP or whoever they're going to use is a document that says, we tested the groundwater, we proposed pump into this wetland and we can assure the commission it won't have any adverse impacts. Instead of having, uh, not having any of that information and sort of off the cuff, asking Mr. Kenny, for example, tonight, what's the pH? Like, and he's, and he starts offering sort of his opinion on what the water should be in terms of pH. Why don't you have that data upfront before you're pumping that water into the wetland? So really, that should be step one. You have to be comfortable with the pumping idea. I don't know how you can be without that. Uh, you have to be confident in the monitoring plan. I don't know how you can be comfortable with that. And when I hear consultants get up and say that solar panels are going to last for thirty years, for example, I've been involved in solar panel cases. I can tell you that there's no solar panel out there now that goes thirty years. And I don't care what, I'm sure that Mr. Solly will come in with his, with that marketing material that I saw. But I can tell you that's not what's going on and a lot of things happen and trees fall and things happen to solar panels after three years. So, uh, there should be testing before the application is filed. There should be groundwater testing annually to make sure that, and you have the evidence that the material was brought on the site. And once again, your point is well taken. I didn't test it. I, I can't test it. But again, the jurisdiction of this commission is protecting the wetlands. The applicant has the means to get this information. It's not in this record. It is not in this record. So this application should be denied. The applicant can put together a more robust application that answers the questions that this commission has that you can feel if you're going to do this thing and they're going to, if they're going to get this economic gift, then at least they should work for it and provide this commission full comfort that you should have before you, before you let them. I won't take up any more time. I'm not going to contest on the, uh, attorney Finn's characterization of the case or any of that. But this is what I'm asking. So I appreciate your patience. On the intervention, I would submit that, uh, that we can, by just looking at the tickets and looking at what was brought in, I would suggest that this commission can make findings on the petition intervened. But this, it's in the record. I could have done this under intervention or under public comment. And, and under any circumstances, I appreciate your patience. I appreciate the good questions that you've been asking. But I think I presented a reasonable approach here. Thank you. I don't know if you have any questions for me. And I guess.
I have one question for, uh, for Insol, or two maybe. You still, still there?
Yes.
Okay, so you're suggesting four years of quarterly sampling. It's, it's my understanding that DEP requires only two years of quarterly sampling to, to prove that a, a site has been properly remediated. Why do you think it would take another two years?
Well, I, I, I recommended, perhaps the language is not clear. Um, I recommended four quarters of seasonal sampling over one year. To characterize groundwater.
Okay, um, and the other question is, um, I was always under the impression that, that, that groundwater traveled sort of with the contours.
Not, not necessarily in bedrock. Bedrock groundwater flow doesn't necessarily follow contours.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't think that the, the groundwater is going from, from, uh, east to west on this site?
It, it, it may well be, but, uh, the water is going to be pumped into wetlands, some of which is going to and, and end up on, uh, wetland areas on Mr. Metropolis's property.
My just, my thought is you're, you're pumping out of, out of, uh, a much higher elevation in an area where probably even if it was contaminated at the site, you wouldn't be collecting that water anywhere.
Well, it'll be pumped to the wetland areas in an uncontrolled manner. You know, and if it contains contaminants, it may get anywhere. Once, once it's released, uh, into the wetland. The, the other component with wetlands is that the, you know, the, the criteria for, uh, you know, the water quality standard, the chemical constituents, uh, you know, some of the numbers are extremely low. And so even relatively low levels of contaminants may exceed, um, the, uh, water quality standards.
And I would just add, isn't it on the applicant to demonstrate the hydro gradient at the end of the day? And that's great, that's a great question, but it's on the applicant as well. So I know, uh, that the applicant's going to have a lot to say about me, about my client and about sort of these claims. But at the end of the day, this groundwater testing question before and ongoing monitoring questions are really what we should focus on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, why don't we open it to public at this point and then we'll let them wrap it up at the end, so.
I'm going to keep my thoughts straight in line. I've been making notes here and there. I can't, uh, I'm not in your position, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions first just to make sure I have it right in my head. Is it correct the property prior to the current owner? There was some type of earth materials taken out, dirt, gravel, rock, whatever, to a pretty large extent, yes? There was a citation or something issued, correct?
Not to the previous owner, to the current owner.
Right, no, I know that. That, that was issued, then there was some fill-in. Is it accurate or not that when that property was sold to the group individual, whatever it is, that is currently before you with this project? Was it something that would have, should have, could have been made aware when they purchased the property that there were these issues? It was not just ready to go, ready to build permit kind of thing?
They knew about the violation. They came in, the current owners came in for the excavation and fill permit.
Correct.
Including the wetland permit associated with that in order to remediate this violation and the new owners have.
I remember the last meeting, it was they thought fill would be cheaper. It's not, whatever. Okay, fine. I'm, I'm like seriously distressed that it could be stock market, your home, your car, whatever. You buy something, you think you're going to do well on it, you don't. Sometimes you lose money. It is what it is. It kills me that everybody, including them and everybody that have worked before them, don't get me wrong. Everybody's bending over and this panelist supposed to do a mad game twister to figure out how to make this work. Again, at the expense of it falls at wetlands. That kills me. I think it's awful if that's how things are written for us. I have to look online for something. I have no proof of concept that I've heard from anybody that maintaining this vernal pool with manmade is going to be good. I heard literally quote, he was more than confident, one of the gentlemen, that it will be successful. We're going to monitor it for three years to calibrate water, make sure it's not too much, it's not too little. pH isn't an issue. We're going to test the water. We're going to see what water levels we need for a period of time to know where to go from then on. And we shouldn't have to monitor anymore because we'll have it set. It's for ten, forty eight hours, every two weeks, during this month, whatever. There's no anything that I've heard from an expert anywhere saying it's a good idea. Yet I can find out and I sent it to you guys. Mine was one of the emails. I didn't hear you read it off. It was in there, I saw it in tonight's agenda and packets and all that, so I know it's there. But I did send you guys websites with info also for what I found. And specific, specifically using well water to fill vernal pools generally not recommended, can have a negative impact on the ecosystem. Disruption of natural hydrology, which they're trying to figure out where it should be. Water quality issues. Well, water can have different levels of dissolved minerals, chemicals, potential bacteria compared to the natural water sources of a vernal pool. This can negatively impact the delicate ecosystem and the species that adapt to the pool's natural water chemistry. Can also introduce certain contaminants. I think that was one. It, it also went further with, you know, gap pHs and everything. It's if, God, this is going to sound awful. You, you have a family member that I, I'm sorry, that vernal pool is dead. I've been in more meetings this year than I'd like to think. You guys are probably sick of me. I'll be the first one to vie for keeping something going. Introducing this, this corpse and, and you're going to try and recreate Mother Nature. I'd love to think it's good. The fact somebody tried doing it before. I think if Dr. Clemens or somebody were actually to give advice or somebody who really gave some statistics on human maintenance, recreation and regeneration of a vernal pool, it probably would have said, don't do it. Already taken it on themselves to reintroduce it again this year. Those animals are now relying on it. We can't do what Mother Nature does. We're going to screw it up. I'd rather somebody look at the true statistics, real research and go, you know what, if we need to move on from this, that we're going to get an acre of wetlands, that's great. That acre of wetlands, again, was supposed to be to help because it is a vernal pool. It is a completely different ecosystem, different species, different everything. One isn't the other. Their fruit, their, their, their apples and oranges, but that's as good as it gets. You want to trade one for the other, you do whatever you want. The vernal pool, I really, really, really wish versus us building multiple wells that could at some point go foul. Because this may or may not work, let's face it. Then we've got all this pipe that's going to go over and pump this. All these people that are going to have to maintain it and we have to hope they do it right. Hopefully you guys have some kind of system in place to make sure, uh, credit somebody did or didn't get back to us this quarter. It seems like a lot. And then we've got all this solar stuff going in and offenses going in. Is it really worth it for something that we don't have a proof of concept? It may be better environmentally to let it just be dead as much as I hate to see that. Go with the new acre you're getting of wetlands, fine. One is not the other. But you guys really have to look at what we're doing to try and, and do this corpse of a vernal pool that we're going to hope is going to work and we're going to pump in water that is not the same quality that should be in a vernal pool. It's not a manmade pond, it's not well park. It's, you're screwing with Mother Nature and you are then impacting the animals negatively because they're going to turn around and adapt. And now that's going to screw them up in ways we didn't plan on. There's been no proof of concept I've seen, no study showing. I keep hearing, we think this is going to work and I applaud them for the efforts. Again, you guys know, I, I would be the first to say, keep the wetlands. That's why I am here. That's why I was here till ten thirty last time. I just don't think this is really a good move. It's on you guys, but I really wish you'd get some, something to back it up other than somebody who's going to sit there and play, well, we're going to play a game of what if? We're going to spin ball for three years, throw shit at the wall, see what sticks, hope we do well. And in the interim, we're going to screw up the land even more. We're going to drop in a few wells and drop in some pipes. Again, I applaud the effort, but I think we're doing more harm than doing for something that we're not even sure with a percentage what the viability is long term. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers wants to speak? Anybody online? Anybody online?
Nobody online. Resus?
Uh, we'll give them an opportunity to, to close and then we'll call recess.
Uh, for the record, again, it's, uh, Steve. The opposition raised a whole laundry list of claims. I'm going to try to pick them up as efficiently as, as possible. Uh, with regard to the economics, I, I, I mentioned some case law to you last time. I think it bears repeating. Uh, our courts have previously found the commission's denial improper when it did not adequately consider the cost and economic reasonableness of the alternatives. Commission improperly denied plaintiff's application. Evidence showed plaintiff's plan was most reasonable and prudent option. One of, among other things, alternatives were more expensive. And lastly, another case, one of the, the three I'm excited to, but the last one, applicant's proposal was the only reasonable option when alternatives involved great expense. Of course, the other thing we have here is not only expense, it's the time. Now, it's interesting that, that, uh, the interviewer who wants to protect the environment says, you know what? Doesn't matter. Take as long as you need to, to try to rehydrate that well. Again, they're only interested in causing delay to my client's ability to have this product, this, remove this notice of violation and increase his expense. And we know that for a fact because they talk out of both sides of their mouth. On one side, they say, you know what? You should be required to bring in all that four hundred ninety three thousand cubic yard of fill. And on the other hand, they said, you know what? All that fill could be tainted. Do they want us to bring it in? And perhaps, you know, lower the standard for the material acceptance procedure and run the risk of, uh, of, of maybe having some, uh, environmental contamination? Or don't they? Well, they, they switched gears in the last day, right? What's their new gear? Their new gear or their new argument is, well, at the very least, test the water that's going to be used to rehydrate the well. And you know what? My client's amenable to that. Okay, maybe that will make your, your job a lot easier. Now, we're not willing to go to the standards that, uh, Mr. Insol insisted upon. Those, those standards are even higher than DEEP standards. But certainly, w- w- what makes sure the water is potable? It's drinking water quality. And if it's good enough to drink, it's good enough for the wetlands. And I should add, we've already. And, I should add, we've already had an experiment of rehydrating the wetlands by piping, by using a well. We did it under the original permit that you gave to us. And it was successful in rehydrating the well. And it was successful in reestablishing a wetland species. And so, we've already had an experiment, we've already shown that you can rehydrate this wetland by pumping and that the water is of a quality that it did not negatively impact, uh, the, the floor or the soil of, of the well. So it may not be equivalent to, you know, a, you know, sheet flow into it, but it's, it's pretty good. And as the, um, uh, uh, this person who's been very active before each night indicated, we are creating a, a new wetland to balance off the whole thing. And again, this wetland is no more than 20% of all the wetlands on the property. So, you know, let's, let's keep things in scale here, please. You know, uh, I got, I have to tell you that, that, you know, Mr. Metropolis has been making allegations all over the place. He made allegations to the DEEP years ago. DEEP did not pick up on any of his claims, not one. In addition, he apparently told Mr. Insol, and this is on page two of Mr. Insol's report, the trust, that has to be Mr. Metropolis, he's the trustee, has informed partner that the same equipment owned by Julian Enterprises that was used in Fairfield was relocated to the 64 Cameron Drive and 400 Pennis Drive quarry when waste disposal in Fairfield ceased. That is a lie. That never happened, and there's no evidence of that. In addition, apparently, Mr. Metropolis told Mr., told Mr. Insol that some of the waste disposal vendors that disposed of waste at the Fairfield DPW yard subsequently disposed of waste at 64 Cameron Drive and 400 Pennis Drive. Not true. So, uh, with all respect, Mr. Metropolis has proven not to be reliable in his, in his factual statements about this property. Now, one of the things that, that I've been asking myself for years here is why hasn't Mr. Metropolis tested the water on his property? If you were really concerned about environmental contaminants in your groundwater, every one of us would do a test. Now, Mr. Metropolis previously has said, well, I don't have a well on my property. And my response to that is if you're worried about environmental contamination at your property or the groundwater, you're gonna drill a well and you're gonna find out. And then you're gonna find out where that contamination is coming from. Perhaps maybe coming from your own property. But you don't sit back, and again, to keep me with my, my true belief that this is only an attempt to delay and cause expense. But the environmental concerns here are not real by Mr. Metropolis. As, uh, Mr. Chairman pointed out, there is extensive groundwater testing, uh, and testing of wells on this property. It's fully vetted. This commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission never would have issued the prior approvals unless they were convinced that the plans that they had approved were environmentally safe. Uh, Mr. Insol also wrote on a media article to say that Mr. Hypo only did a sniff test. Well, if you, if you review his, the minutes of his report or you review his report, you'll see that he did much more than a sniff test. He was there watching this fill that was already there being placed. And he was hired by this commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure that everything was filed according to your decisions. And that's what he did, and that's what he reported when his work was concluded. One other thing that you probably haven't found in the record, but it's there. The earlier hearing on the earlier, uh, applications, Mr. Metropolis acknowledged during the hearings that, that he wanted to buy this property from the owner, and he couldn't buy it. Why would you wanna buy a property if you were concerned about environmental contamination on it? I'll let you draw your own conclusions by the fact that this letter was just submitted to us yesterday after Mr. Insol was hired over a month ago. I think I'm almost finished. I wanna, I wanna provide you with some additional information about what the law requires with regard to evidence that's properly to be considered by this commission. The law is clear that general concerns that a wetland might be harmed is not sufficient evidence to deny an application. To be sufficient evidence to justify denying an inland wetlands application, the evidence must show that this specific product, project will cause adverse effects on a specific wetlands or water source at issue rather than simple general concerns or speculation. So what Mr. Insol said is, it, perhaps the groundwater might cause a problem. That doesn't meet the standard of evidence that's properly considered by this commission. And again, you know, I, I, obviously, I'm the advocate's lawyer, but if you feel a need to, to bet what I'm saying, please consult with your own counsel. Because this law is what we call black letter law. It's without doubt the law of the state of Connecticut. I'm gonna read you, uh, one more item on, on this particular issue. There's a case called Three Levels Corporation 148 Connecticut appellate appellate court holding that expert testimony was insufficient to support a finding of adverse impact because although he articulated numerous concerns and critiques of the plaintiff's proposed activities, he did not identify any specific actual harm that was likely to, to occur to the wetlands. Substantial evidence test is not met by a general statement by an expert that some type of adverse impact is likely to result from the proposed regulated activities. Mr. Insol didn't even say some type of adverse impact. He, he's not a wetlands expert. He can't outline about impact on wetlands. He doesn't have that, 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 that ability. And he stopped sort of saying that it would. He said, perhaps, maybe doesn't. You know what, I, I, I think we've covered it, I, I don't know.
Another that I think, very thing, I think. In the beginning, we proposed that you would test the well prior to discharging any problem under the wetlands. And we would submit it to the staff for their review in concurrence that it was clean. We, we, we can't test it yet because we haven't drilled the well. Can't drill the well, but we gotta prove to do so. So it's a chicken or the egg. We're proposing more proposing. We're happy to do all the necessary testing. And you're excited about this opportunity to get this approval, hopefully soon, well installed, hydration happening this winter, and to start creating this brand new way for a moment. So, with that, I think.
Yeah, I think Mr. Cam wants, wants to admit it. And again, I just wanna reiterate that on the testing, that, that the criteria that Mr. Insol supplied today, we're not agreeing to that, I just wanna be clear on that. Thank you.
Briefly, um, okay. Just wanted to point out that well water discharge to our wetlands and streams is actually quite common. Not in the exact same way that we're proposing, but when you think about every home that has a well that uses that water and then it certainly goes through a septic system, but ultimately it's put into the groundwater and makes its way to a wetland or stream often. So this, we live in a developed environment where we have developments and natural areas, but we're throughout towns like Monroe, we're drawing water out of the ground and putting it back up to the surface, near the surface. And so we're constantly cycling like this. So it's, it's not that unusual to draw water from the ground and put it back to the surface. Certainly, it's not, it's not exactly the same, but well water being drawn out and discharged back to the ground close to the surface is, is quite a company.
Arnold Karp, good evening commissioners. Let's talk about facts first, innuendo, okay? My neighbor continues to try to harm the value of this property. It is only by myself, few others, and it is my family name. We have been, uh, back and forth on this property for years. This is the most watched over wetlands, probably in the town of Monroe. I can think of no other project, I watch a lot of the wetlands meetings, that has put in this time and effort to remediate a problem that's been 20 years in the making, okay? You know, we continue to get approvals. It then continues to get litigated. We spend years and thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars in costs. Every time Attorney Green and his clients sit up, they talk to us about all of this bad things that have happened on this property. I've been on this property more than almost anybody else, uh, that I know of. And today, we talked about American Environmental and ONG and 57 Gower Road and Wade's Garage. Material did come in from all of those sites, all of those sites, okay? And let's talk about, uh, one of the high schools, I don't know if it was Strongwood or wherever. The material that came into this site was tested. Yes, prior to demolition, the school had asbestos. All the asbestos was removed, then the brick and tile came to this site. At Wade's Garage, I went back, I did the research. It was a site that had issues, that those issues were taken care of. And the remaining concrete that was to clear and clean came to this site. So, nothing that we have ever found, okay? And we've sorted through all the material. Commissioner Stewart will remember when we were here three or four or five years ago that all of the material has been sorted through. Anything that was steel or anything that had any issues was sent offsite. So, this has been an attempt to devalue this property by somebody who tried to buy it, was unable to buy it, um, you know. But every time, you know, you read the articles, it's always this dirty site. This site, I guarantee, is one of the things, we did a lot of testing during our ownership. We did, uh, extensive testing for the town. So I'm trying to clear up the record because every time somebody looks at this, they then go and they listen to these tapes where I have a neighbor who's trying to destroy the economic value of this property, saying there's all that's wrong with it. Yes, is pumping the perfect answer for the wetlands? No, it is the solution. It is a much better solution than the thousands of trusts that we took grief about when we first thought that was a, a method to help solve the wetlands issue. If five years ago, we knew that that process wouldn't work, we probably wouldn't have offered it. We're now back saying, it doesn't work, okay? The reason it doesn't work is there is not, yeah, yes, you could buy gravel, okay? Or crush concrete and fill the site at hundreds and really millions of dollars. Or we can certainly try this and create wetlands. And remember, no matter what happens on this site, we continue to come back to this commission because we have wetlands, so before any development. So it's not like we're here and you're not gonna see us for years. Anything that goes on on this site, you have ultimate oversight with P and Z because there's no building that's yet been presented, there's no roads that have yet been presented, utilities that have yet been presented. So it's not like we're here and then we're disappearing. We are here to make sure that the site is clean, kept clean, nothing has gone on on this site literally for the last two and a half years, except pumping into the wetlands, okay? I've walked it probably more than anybody, maybe except with the exception of Bill's staff, who has a more keen eye than I do. But, you know, we're trying to do what's right, get this moved out from, uh, this part of wetlands so that this property can eventually be developed. But it's not like there's some third party corporation that owns this who hasn't been at almost every one of these meetings. But we continue to go back to the thing of what could have been. I can tell you, the, up through four, almost all of it. The water level was at 411 being 415. That was all filled with stone dust that was natural from the site. I'm happy to attest to it, I have previously, we've watched it all go in. There is nothing that will come back to me, my family, or any future owner of this site because we've gone through all of it. So, uh, I just wanted to get that on the record because, you know, we continue to be potential interested parties. Say, well, you can't get through wetlands, it's a contaminating site. So they've done a stellar job of making sure that my value and my partners and my family's values go to nothing. So I appreciate the time and effort you guys have put in. Commissioner Stewart has now sat through this for the second time.
And I love every minute.
I thought hearing from the principal might give you guys some understanding that, you know, this isn't, you know, I dragged Bill out, I dropped Kevin, Attorney Finn. But the truth of matter is, this is the most watched site in town.
Uh, in, in conclusion, I, I just, uh, you know, the, you know, Mr. Metropolis has appealed every approval by every commission. And, uh, last time, they challenged whether the decision adequately addressed the intervention. So in your decision, I would ask you to be careful about how you, how you draft that and you, you attend to that claim in advance. If you need assistance, I'm sure Town Council can help you. Just trying to protect us from having to come back again. Assuming we get our approval, uh, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves. And, and I too also wanna thank you very, very much for your attention, and we really appreciate it. So with that, I think we're finished.
I just didn't wanna miss the whole. I guess you're prepared also to install a battery for these solar panels?
Yeah.
As needed.
As a battery, as needed, yes.
Yes.
Is that in the documentation that you provided?
Yeah, we can certainly provide a, a battery to, to company.
But it's not in the documentation you provided as well. I just, I would add it as a condition of approval.
I don't believe it was, but I certainly think it'd be a great condition of approval.
Because you need to pump around the clock, correct? Or you don't necessarily, I mean.
Um, that's, you know, calculations, we just, but it's not, not critical.
I wanna say, and I don't have, I wanna say, as long as you get the, the right volunteer for it. You do it with three wells for all, or just one well.
I'm just, I just, you know, I figured you're gonna, you're gonna need it because in what months are you pumping generally?
Mostly pumping from September to March.
Okay, so I mean, it's a tough, solar wise, it's a tough time, a tough time of year to, to get the, to get the, the solar power you need.
Yes, the, the panels would include, I, I mean, I can't remember who was in the documentation, and I don't have it.
We can add it.
We can add it.
Yes, solar panels should include batteries, storage as needed to provide sufficient energy.
Oh, sorry, there was one other. You, you had pointed out the detail of the, of the underground pipe. But is that the drainage pump pipe trench?
No, that's the water line from the pump to the wetland discharge.
Where, where is that detail? Just.
Detail needs. 2.02, sorry, Chris, you tell. We have that appropriate gap.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you. Does, does the town engineer have any comments?
He didn't have anything add, to add to the note.
So we had asked for evidence of a diligent effort to find clean fill. I did see one of the exhibits, but can you interpret what, what I saw there? It looked like one 10 acre section. What, what, what evidence have you, do you have for us as far as? What evidence have you, do you have for us as far as your efforts?
Sure, so the applicant submitted documentation of all the testing that was done on a number of sites and also I think nine sites that they visited as well to go test material to have us available. And those sites, all the material at those sites did not meet the intake protocol. So, they were unable to import from those locations.
That was all, that was nine different sites, not one?
No, nine different, they were in New Haven and Canyon and Darien and Fairfield.
How many samples did you have? I saw one report that had only a few samples.
Well, if one sample proves it, then none of it's, that was the issue.
So, it did not meet the standards for the Monroe.
The intake protocol, for this.
Do you know if it met the standard deep regulations? Because I know, I know the one for your other permit is more strict than the standard deep.
For standard deep, I don't know that because once it didn't meet ours, we couldn't, it was off the table. We didn't.
Right, no, because.
We didn't further to see it.
We'd asked in the event that you were able to lower the standard to meet at least the Connecticut standards versus what the town of Monroe put in.
I think.
You know, where was the difference there if we could get?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you weren't at the last meeting.
That's correct, I did watch it though.
Right, so the big thing is after that last meeting, we went to planning zone and we got a very resounding, at least from one commissioner, that they had no interest in modifying the standards. That's when we went back and said, okay, our proposal is to stop the fill, stop importing material and build this additional acre of water. So, that was, that's what we're proposing. Because planning zone, we had no interest in modifying the standards to meet the definition of clean fill. And all of our efforts, all the applicants' efforts at this point have been unsuccessful. So, that's why, that's what the application was for.
Was that on record?
Yes.
Yeah, they talked about it.
At the last planning and zoning meeting?
At the, yes.
Yeah, but they talked about it at the last wetland meeting.
We also presented, yeah, but Chairman wasn't.
That was one commissioner of planning and zoning that had a resounding opposition?
Yes.
No one, everybody else was more silent. So, I'm not saying that the commission in its entirety, that that was their opinion.
It was just one, one.
It was one area, vocal commission.
But again, we're, we're, we're trying, we're trying to get to a resolution. And the thought of even sending these discussions about modifying the standards, when we have an intervenor who doesn't want anything to happen here at all. We're trying to get to a place where we feel that we've, we've, we've remediated the prior bad acts from prior owner. We've, we've invested substantially in the property to get something that can be, that can try to revive that the best we can, aim to propose to build another acre of wetlands. We think this is the best of all of them, so.
And we didn't write the intake protocol that was so strict was basically continuation by others that was, we didn't decide not to meet the DEP standards to make it higher, greater. Commissioner Stewart will probably remember the numerous discussions that we had about asphalt and fill and all of the ramifications of it. So, again, while we were obligated to meet those regulations, those regulations weren't written by us, it was what we thought, what we were told would get approved.
Right. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, then we need a motion to close the hearing.
Yes.
Make a motion to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kelly to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Can we move on? I'll call a five-minute recess for a quick little break. All right, we're back, okay. Moving on to deliberations, okay? So, our first deliberation will be, what was it? Yeah, I W V 2024 oh four, 30 coverage. Does anybody have any questions or concerns regarding this? Or should we just?
Comfortable with it. I know they've, they've been trying to get this taken care of sometime.
Yeah, I'm glad they've decided to move forward with this.
Yeah.
They've been very proactive. They've been keeping me in the loop all along the way. I do think the, I mean, the planting plan is pretty extensive.
Right.
They're not looking to change it anymore.
Suggesting any conditions?
Uh, yeah, so there were, there were a couple of things. First off, so first off, do we want to hold a bond? We haven't talked about that at all. That could be a condition of the approval if you, if you deem it appropriate. They, and again, they've been more than forthcoming.
Right.
But it's just a matter of.
What's, what's standard protocol with situations like that?
Okay, it's not unusual that you hold a bond for a remediation in case the property gets sold, in case something happens and the property owner can't do the remediation. You have something in your, in your pocket that, that. Somebody online?
No, we just never viewed. Or they remove the shed and all the, you know, improvements they did on the neighbor's property and then they don't do the planting plan. You know, and now you have exposed soil and, you know, half done site.
Because it involves another neighbor's property and most of the work is not on theirs, it probably makes sense to put some sort of a bond on there.
Are you prepared to put forward a number? Because they didn't fill out a bond form.
They did not fill out a bond form, but it can be a condition of the approval to have a bond.
They have to state the cost of the bond.
Okay, if that's something that you are.
What do people give as a bond? Is it a cash bond or is it?
It could be a cash or surety bond.
Yeah, and surety bonds are.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, what do people generally, generally homeowners put up the cash bond?
Homeowners normally put up a cash bond if it's a thousand bucks, 1,500, a couple thousand dollars. But if you're trying to bond that plant.
That's a hell of a, that's a, that's an expensive bond.
That's a very expensive bond. So, I mean, the, normally what you're doing is you're bonding, you're not actually normally bonding the work. You're bonding the stabilization of the site. You're bonding soil and erosion control. So, if they would abandon it halfway through, you were able to complete the stabilization of the site to put it in a state where it could remain until we're able to either go through the legal avenues or channels in order to get them to do it. Normally the stabilization includes the landscaping.
When was the last time you guys pulled a bond?
Normally.
And went in there and did the, did the work.
I know.
Just that's, you know?
So, normally it includes the landscaping. So, there is an option here where you make the bonding just so that you could mulch and seed the property instead of installing the landscaping as shown.
It's just something for you to consider, I don't want you to overlook it, that's all.
No, I'm open to recommendation then for kind of like the base level.
But they, you never have them fill out a bond form.
No.
So, we can't calculate another. Unless you know something, unless you know enough information that we could.
I have enough information to recommend a bond, but if it has to be approved by them, then.
Yeah, you would have to recommend the number. That's what I'm saying, they have to vote on a number.
A recommended number.
Okay, so, so to stabilize the site, a $5,000 bond would be enough to do that. If you wanted to consider landscaping, a rough number of lands, of plants, it's about $30,000 worth of plants. But again, that's based on this plan with all of the plants. So, it's not just stabilization.
Can we, I agree with you that, because of the neighbor. But can we reduce that amount of the landscaping, you know, to maybe half of that plus the 5,000? I'm wondering if we can come up with a, with a figure that's not too onerous, but, but is significant. They do want to get it done and.
They've been very proactive the whole way through and you could tell they don't even, you know, that they want to move forward, which is why they didn't want to take the extra time
Right.
to redo the plan to reduce the number of plants.
Any other conditions?
Do we want to put a deadline on the completion of the project? And do you think it's a good idea for the mulching? Mulching the first year only? And wetland markers need to be installed because they're not shown on the plan?
Wetland markers for sure. That, that just makes sense.
Well, they don't, even, I'm not even on their property.
Is that, it would be on their property? Yeah, I mean, they would put the wetland markers on their property.
Not on the neighbor's property.
What's that?
Not on the neighbor's.
Not on the neighbor's property?
So, you put them on the property line or something?
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Every 75 feet along the back and it won't happen again.
I'm okay with a stabilization bond.
Bond, wetlands markers.
Like the five grand or 10 grand? Like, what are you thinking?
I think five is more than enough.
I think five is.
I think five is.
I think that's a lot. Start asking for people to put cash in. They've already spent a ton of money on stuff. Completion date.
I wouldn't say, you know, I don't think it's necessary. I'm just saying that there's, you know, you have the ability, you have the ability to do that.
Right, I like the idea of there being something.
Okay, so.
Five feels okay. It's enough for them to.
Motion that we approve the remediation plan with a $5,000 bond, wetlands markers along the property line, a completion date of December 1.
Okay, so let's think about that deadline date. Realistically, planting can't, won't start until September this year.
Yeah, so.
Right?
September.
It's a lot of planting.
Yeah.
I would say give them the fall. I would even recommend giving them the spring to do any.
May 1?
I, I think that would be.
May 1.
May 1.
And then what was your mulching situation? What are they showing on the plans as that proposed mulching?
It, it doesn't say. In the, it's, it says mulching as necessary and there is no end date.
Maintenance for how long? I mean, this is how long we're going to keep their bond, so.
Right.
I mean, obviously the plants have got to live for, for, for at least.
I would have, I would have two, two full growing seasons, which is pretty standard for us. Two full growing seasons to inspect the plants again. But I would say after the first year, no pruning, no mulching and leave it in a natural state.
Very good.
Fortunately. So, do we need to reiterate that?
No, he's got.
All right, so we have a.
I'll second the motion. Approve with the conditions as stated.
Good.
That, that's not.
Okay.
It's fine.
All in favor? Ah, okay. That's unanimous. All right. What's that? Okay, moving on to I W C 2021 dash 06 R dash A1, file number 137664, Cambridge, 4 Independence Drive. I'm going to recommend we table this until our next meeting when we have all the commissioners here so we can have a complete discussion about everything. I just think it'd be appropriate since this is such a big matter. I'd rather everybody have an opportunity to.
And we have 65 days to render a decision?
35.
35.
Easy as six.
And we only have one meeting in July, so at the next meeting, which is July 23rd, a decision has to be made.
Right.
Well, we have 35 days, so we, but we don't get another, we don't get another meeting. So, you guys have to draft a decision for us.
And we would like your guidance there.
So, if you want, we can start deliberation and make some comments and suggestions, but I, I don't think we should vote until.
Oh, yeah.
Our commissioners, at this point.
Well, next meeting, next meeting, right?
Right, so that's it.
That's it.
The next meeting.
That's what you get. So.
Go ahead, you're chomping at the bit to say something?
I was.
You look like you're.
You know, I never, I never really liked the filling idea. I never really thought it was going to work as far as, wow, they're going to fill this much. And then when, when everyone made him put clean fill, I was like, wow, that's not, I didn't feel like it was going to happen at the beginning. But in any case, I wasn't completely happy with the applicant not doing it while, for the last three years. That being said, I don't, you know, I mean, it's better than nothing. I have my doubts it's going to last, it's going to last the eternity.
That's my concern is.
My thought is.
It's not going to be like a forever solution.
No, it doesn't. My ultimate feeling is, is I would love to give them three years to show me. You know what I mean? Rather than my, if it's possible, rather than changing this approval completely, okay? They, they're on, modify their approval. And I don't know that the attorney will, we can do that and just say, hey, you got three years, you do it, right? If you can do it and prove it to us for the next three years, then, then we'll, we'll talk about it and say yes. But to change it and then it doesn't work or, or they're not being consistent. And it's too late, now they've got a building up on, on, on the site and then what do you do? I mean.
Well, how do you know in three years?
Like, is that. They reported to us, but, well, you may not, but.
Okay, so let's say it doesn't go as expected, then what?
And I assume they're still on the hook.
Is there, is there a, I don't know, how do you word a temporary? I don't know, how would that even work?
I mean, just to pressure test this, what you're asking is that they do not have the right to develop the property with like a building or a business for three years while it's getting monitored.
From what I recall, they, they had two, two areas, one in the front where, where it was one elevation and then there was one in the back that was elevated. So, I mean, I guess they could probably develop the front.
You are restricting their ability to develop the property in its entirety.
Well, they were the one that was going to take 10 years to fill it.
My, my perspective on this, I, I feel like the original approval is a better option for the wetlands. And I understand all the talk about fill. I think that honestly, I, I can't get past the belief that, that that is the best option for, for maintaining the levels, for restoring and maintaining the levels. And so, it feels like things are a little bit out of order. And I feel like if there is, I don't feel like enough has been done to pursue the option to modify the fill permit and the requirements. I have not seen enough to feel like that's, that's not an option.
If that's off the table, that's a different conversation, but it's not off the table. The modification of the fill permit.
Right.
It's going to have, it's, I'll be honest with you, it's going to be tough for them to get clean fill at, at, at any, at a price. It's just so expensive to move that fill around. People don't, if it's clean, it's clean, it's going someplace local. You know, if they're putting a highway through the town, then yeah, okay, there'd be plenty to get rid of. But, but it's just a huge number.
Oh, good. Go ahead.
So, Ryan, I agree with you, both of your points. I don't want a confidence in the solution as far as pumping, monitoring. Who's going to knock the snow off the solar panels in winter? You know, is it going to work? I just, I don't really have a, I don't like to. I'm not, just don't have the confidence in the solution. Creating one acre of wetlands is, is nice, but I almost brought one of my little dog bones to say, look, this is 1.4% of what you're talking about. It's only an acre. You know, I would have liked to have seen more along the lines, more care from the applicant that the wetlands, you know, had dried up and, and that they weren't making progress. 69 cubic yards, it's, it's nothing compared to the, what they were trying to put in. I still, I would like to go back over the records, the, that they, that the input with regard to evidence of their diligent effort because. Because to me, there's, I see, I see fill all over the place. And, and right there at the trucks, all that fill that they brought in. Where'd that come from? Does that, does that not meet the standards, you know? So I, I would be, I would want to take more time on this. I think that I, I wish I was part of the initial to, to really understand it yet.
No, you don't.
Well, maybe, you're right, maybe I don't. But I, I hesitate to go against that because it seemed appropriate at the time. And they, everybody thought it was feasible, including the applicant. But, you know, that, that they've only brought in sixty-nine cubic yards, not much. I don't think we, you know, they should develop it partially or even consider developing it partially until we till we make some kind of determination. And that would include, I, I'd like to see some good testing on the groundwater, the current groundwater, just some, some kind of testing.
That's kind of where I'm getting at though, because you guys don't feel comfortable, it seems like. And, and I, I have my doubts about whether this thing is going to last. And my feeling is currently they're kind of under, their current approval is to add water to the, to the.
To pump the water.
Pump the water. So in effect, we're not changing their current approval. We're just saying, instead of doing it the way you did it, we're just adding solid panels and a battery and a new well.
In lieu of the electricity.
But that, another, another thing that potentially.
Yeah, it's not a self.
I, I agree, so, you know, and that gives them some chance to, to prove that they can do it and that they're willing to do it and be consistent. And also gives them more time to find fill. And if.
But that's what they're, they're, they don't want to go look for more fill.
I know, you guys are thinking that maybe they do. I don't think, I think it's just, I think you're just delaying in the inevitable. They're not, they're not going to find.
Where's, when, when's the next planning and zoning?
The seventeenth of July. We don't have a first meeting because of the fourth of July.
One's on.
The twenty-third.
So they'll meet before we do. Maybe it makes sense to hear what happens in that meeting before we render any kind of decision.
Oh, yeah, well, we would, right?
I'm sorry.
But they still have to draw something up.
Well, we could go both ends. We could.
Draft an approval and.
Draft potential conditions of an approval and also talk to the town attorney about some of the items that you've brought up. As well as the applicant is here overhearing this, but I can make sure that we ask the commission to be a little more vocal on whether they would be willing to entertain reducing the clean fill standards to see what they, as a board, maybe has more of a consensus than just one person.
I think that's wise, and I also think adding in the fact that they're four of us versus seven of us. I think we really need to postpone our judgment on this tonight.
Well, I don't think we vote it, and also so you guys can, yeah, take a look at the material a little more.
Right, yeah, we got a lot of time.
We're trying to vote on it tonight, but we do only have one meeting and want to make sure if it does get approved or, or even if it gets denied, that we have that it's the record solid on what the consensus is from the, from the commission.
So your, your position is essentially that part of the application as it currently exists requires that they are pumping water. And that's not been happening, happening. So the suggestion is for them to maintain on the same application and to choose to install this solar pump system to show us that it can work, essentially. And that is not, that, that's what you're suggesting. It's, it's not necessarily an approval to this amendment request.
No, a hundred percent. It's, if. We're not, we're not taking this as the, as the gospel forever. We're taking it as the, as the modification of the previous approval.
But just.
But not removing the fill at this point.
I don't believe they were proposing to reuse the existing well that they have. They were proposing to drill new wells.
Right.
And do analysis of the yield to make sure that they are comparable to what they felt like the original water intake was for the wetlands based on the previous watershed. So it's not just adding a battery pack.
No, it's drilling. Wells, piping, all that, all that stuff.
So, and, and I think it would make sense to do some, the water testing, like they already said that they would. But then, would obviously have to be a condition. Make sure that the.
Then we can have it as a condition prior to. And then we can talk to, and SAFE to see if they would be able to act as a third-party consultant to review that groundwater testing. I know they said they'll provide it to staff, but we're not hydrologists or, you know, environmental engineers.
Just make sure it's worded so that they're responsible to provide it to us rather than we're responsible to order someone to do it. You follow me? So that it gets done regularly.
Yeah, so if we were to consider an approval, yeah, monitoring of groundwater or prior to pumping.
Inevitably.
The other question is monitoring the wetlands. They obviously have their own consultants that they're proposing the monitoring. Is that sufficient for you guys in the last approval? And SAFE also did some wetland monitoring associated with the pumping and whatnot. So the question is, would you want in addition to that, another third party? And then the question is, if we're having a third party, do you want them to do monitoring? They have to give to us, are we double dipping? Or do you want to replace it with a third party? So that would be something to consider.
I think the dependence of the testing and the monitoring is key.
Yeah, a condition would be that battery backup for the solar panels. So, yeah, those are things to take into consideration for you guys to be clear on what you would be looking for, but we can talk to NSafe to see what's in their capabilities of monitoring, so we know what they feel comfortable that they can and cannot do.
I don't think we have to have the level of monitoring that they're proposing, you know what I mean?
I think.
Annual review and, and one visit or something, I think that's probably enough. I don't think that.
What's wrong with the quarterly?
I think they would do the quarterly, I just don't know that we need our guy to do, you know, to, to be there every quarter reviewing everything, you know what I mean? If they screw up, they screw up.
So they do their monitoring as they have submitted and we do a.
We do a.
Lesser version.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's.
For how long?
For however long we, we come up with for that initial period. And, but obviously, they're going to have to report every, every year after that.
Right. In perpetuity, like what I'm saying, like.
Yeah.
For how long? Ten years, twenty years? Forever? So I can, like, do you put that on the?
On the building owner or whoever buys the property? Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, this is, this is what they're buying. I mean, it's the same as having an irrigation system, basically, you're, you're.
Annual inspections until.
Well, I don't think we need to do an annual, but they have to write it, some sort of a letter to us saying in perpetuity, saying, hey, the system's still up and running and.
Right. Somebody should monitor it every once in a while from, from our perspective.
Yeah, I think so.
Right.
So what, what does that mean? A thousand years? I know, it's, it's, it's just, it's insane, but.
Right, that, that's why I'm not a big fan of this, because.
Well, I mean, what's the choice?
Well, we heard somebody say, let it go.
Well, that is a choice. That is a choice.
I'm a big fan of that one either. So.
Interesting. We cut it off then?
We're not, yeah. I think we need to.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of need some meat to draw up a, a, a approval and a denial and.
A little more meat.
Well, we can. We might just have different versions of the meat to, to suggest.
I mean, the, the denial is that we don't believe that it's, that it's reasonable to run this thing forever.
Right.
I, I mean.
Well, like Ryan said, it's not a better alternative.
I mean, if, the applicant's done everything that, you know, they're, they're gathering all this information that you're asking of them. So if they're, if, if we're asking them to go to planning and zoning and get this information, whether the fill could be, the restrictions on the fill can be lowered. Does that make it so that you're, does that make your decision that, that this is a more feasible alternative to the pumping? You're taking out the mechanical? You're, you're taking out human error, you're taking out, you know, mechanical failure? Is it more feasible to say that it's going to be a healthier wetland because you've lowered your standards for fill and you've increased your watershed to, to naturally feed that area? If they gave you that information that they could lower that, is that a better alternative than if we were to the mechanical means? Or did they prove to you that the mechanical means is just as good and healthy for those wetlands as the natural watershed?
I think we're getting, in the other case, we're not getting a natural watershed. We're getting a, a parking lot and a building and roof, roof drains run through a, run through, you know, some, some treatment.
Which we would get anyway. If this property hadn't been touched and they just came in and put an application, that, that's what would be happening anyway. Right? So that doesn't change. But we wouldn't say, hey, rather than.
Well, we might have said, you gotta be, you gotta be, you know, whatever it is, five hundred feet away from it, who knows?
So as far as writing, writing something, if we approve without bias. So, so a couple of things.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, I'm sorry. If, if, first of all, if we say that our issue, although this is definitely one of the issues, but if we specifically call out the issue being that we don't think that this is sustainable long-term, over a long span of time, we're basically saying this plan can't work under any circumstances. Right, like, if we say that it, it has more to do with the fact that there is a better option and we deny without prejudice, theoretically, they could do more work on proving out this system and bringing it back in front of us if the fill modification is not approved by planning and zoning. Is that right?
Well, they can't put the solar panels and drill the wells unless we approve it, right? Because it's in the setback area, right?
Yeah, so when you say prove it out, you, you're really asking them to provide more information.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like honestly, we ask for that a lot. And we end up hearing counterpoints between the applicant and the intervenor rather than, you know, rather than some of the information that we've wanted to hear more about. Honestly, in the last, in the last hearing that went very late, we asked for more information about the system. And there were some things put in, in the plans and we can review them, but there was very little discussion about that today. And we asked for more evidence about the attempts to provide fill and heard very little about that today. I think that more could probably done to convince me that this was, that this was, that this could be, that this could be a viable option if the fill permit is not able to be modified and, and not able to be achieved.
They did submit some of that information, but I do think let's review it to see if you feel like it's sufficient. I do believe I heard someone here, has this system been done in another location? And I don't feel like any proof of that. So proof of concept that it was viable in another location has been submitted. So, yeah, so if, if your reasoning is because you feel like they need to provide more information, the question would be, yeah, what would that information be that you'd be really, you know, looking for? Which, yes, they could come back if you deny it without prejudice for this similar application, just with the supplemental material that you're thinking of.
Am I correct in understanding that currently they're, the current well pump situation is not functioning?
Correct.
So no matter what, these wetlands are.
Drying up.
Drying up.
If you were to deny this, they would have to come up with a remediation to be in compliance with the current permit.
So could we draft a scenario that says your current plan for drilling new wells is acceptable while you're filling? So at least they can move forward with that. Kind of giving you your test of concept, but at least it gives them the opportunity to drill some wells and start pumping water into these wetlands to get them rehydrated until.
They're not asking, though, to modify the existing permit in that respect. So in theory, this commission already approved that the way that they are currently filling the wells, filling the wetlands with the well that's in place is sufficient.
Okay.
So I, I don't think we can ask for them to do more than that when we deemed that to be sufficient in the first place.
Except they're not doing that, man.
The remediation would be they would have to somehow bring power to that existing well that was there.
So, too bad they didn't kind of parallel track, say, hey, well, how about this and that? It was just the one, not the.
Because this would, this.
I understand.
Application would remediate that violation of the existing permit.
Right. Yeah, we have not heard any other alternatives. In the event of a denial, we will do this to fix our violation.
Correct. I also think we asked them that point, like, but yes.
No, I, no, but it wasn't offered either.
I just, I, I'm, I just feel like we're going to end up with, with another ten years of bacon property doing nothing.
I, I, I hear you. It's, you know, I feel like.
The wetlands will be no better off.
Right.
No, they will, they won't be wet, they won't.
Right. It's getting dumped on us and.
Yeah.
You know, because of the way the property was poorly maintained or poorly mined, you know, by the previous owner.
Well, it was poorly enforced by the town, too. I mean, they should have been after them.
Right.
Right away, but, you know. What's going on?
But we had, we had these conversations several years ago. You were part of them, like, okay, this happened and well, let's fix it. They agreed to fix it and now we're saying we can't.
Well, they're saying they can. They're saying here's two different.
Even the way.
Here's two different ways that we can fix this.
Right.
So they are giving a way to, to, to do that.
If you can't financially do it, then, then everyone just walks away from the property and then they get nothing.
Right.
I think we beat this down.
Yeah, I agree. You guys have enough to.
Yeah, so it sounds like we're going to draft.
Both.
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 Central conditions of an approval.
And talk to the attorney to see if there's a way that we can.
Rub the needle?
We'll draft both and you'll have hopefully all the commissioners here at the next one and phone on it and see what happens.
Right, yeah. You guys are okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. We need to, we don't need to make a motion to continue, do we?
No, it was just going to get to the, what do you say?
July twenty-third.
To the July twenty-third.
Holy forty.
Okay.
Phil's speed ahead.
Okay. Now we are done with deliberation, so now moving on to bond release.
Yeah, so we have IWC twenty dash oh eight, file number thirteen forty, is one sixty-nine Enterprise Drive. The initial bond was issued back in twenty twenty-one. It was for twenty-one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. The current approval that we issued at the last meeting required a new bond is slightly higher for twenty-two thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. And that was submitted before construction gets started. They, yeah, so that was already submitted. I was out at the site, the site is stabilized, which is the the condition of the release of the bond. So staff has no issue with releasing the current bond.
Right. Well, to release the bond.
I'll make a motion to release the bond.
Motion my commissioner Kelly to release the bond. Do we have second?
Second.
Second, my commissioner Stewart, all favor. All right, um, moving down to. Uh, I W C agent activities report, uh, agent approvals.
Okay, so, uh, this one just came in, oh, right, right. Uh, I A A dash twenty-five dash seventeen. File number fifteen forty-two is ninety-eight Benedict Road. Uh, they are replacing their existing driveway and adding a hundred and fifty square feet. Um, in order to add that hundred and fifty square feet, uh, we asked them to. Um, install a rain garden. The rain garden is the closest thing to the wetlands and you're sixty-five feet. Off of those wetlands with that rain garden and it goes forty feet across lawn before it hits, uh, wetlands. Um, so I issued an approval. Um, they are now waiting on their appeal period. Um. So the conditions of the approval, uh, were just to install the rain garden to contain the stormwater management. Uh, moving on to enforcement, I W V, so I've got a lot of, uh, activity with, uh. With some of the violations and the voluntary compliances, so I just wanted to kind of update you on all of that. I W V twenty twenty-five dash oh four, file number fifteen twenty-five. Was one fifteen Richards Drive, clearing within the wetlands in the upland review area. If you remember this one, it was the. Property where the homeowner. Cut down about fifty trees or so, uh, some of them was on town property. Um, he's producing his own plan and his own application. And I've been helping him along with that, um, so you will see it at the next meeting. Um. But we did do that as an I W V, so it's, uh, it's coming in front of the commission, so it has to be a whole application. Um, so you'll see that at the next meeting on July twenty-third. I W V twenty twenty-five dash oh five, file number fifteen thirty is seventy-two Church Street, clearing within the wetlands upland review area. Uh, this was an administrative remediation that you guys had asked me to do it administratively. Uh, we're just waiting for, planting has gone in, site's been cleaned up. We're just waiting for wetland markers to go in. And, uh, and germination on the seed and then I'll be issuing them a resolution. Any questions? We'll move on to I W V twenty twenty-five dash oh three, file number fifteen twenty-three, one oh six Longview Road. Uh, property owner. Cut a couple of trees down. They were in the upland review area. Uh, you again asked me to do an administrative remediation. Um, again, plants have been planted according to a plan that we came up with. Uh, we're just waiting for germination of the seed. Seed has gone down. Uh, before I issue them a, uh, letter of resolution. Moving on to I W V twenty twenty-four dash oh one, file number fif- fourteen eighty-nine was one sixteen Grist Mill Road. Uh, administrative remediation is complete. Site is stabilized and I issued them a letter of resolution. Moving on to voluntary compliance, sixty-six East Village Road, uh. Removal of wood chips. There was a pile of wood chips from last year. Uh, they asked to wait till spring so that seed would take and germinate. Uh, site has been stabilized and they put up their wetland markers and I issued them a letter of resolution. Twenty-six Lorraine Drive, storage of foreign materials. I think it was a canoe and an old chicken coop that was, uh, in an upland review area. They've moved that out. They've stabilized the site and issued them a letter of resolution. Twenty Lorraine Drive, uh, was some trees that were cut down in upland review area. Uh. This is partially resolved, uh, because we gave them time to plant some of the. Plants in the spring and some in the fall. In the fall, I'll follow up, make sure all the rest of the plants are planted. Before I issue them a letter of resolution. And that is that. Any questions on any of them? It was good, you know, it was good feedback. Some things are getting accomplished.
All right.
That's all I have for you.
Okay, moving on to, uh, correspondence. Uh, so what do we got?
Okay.
Citation there?
Yeah, so this is the citation, oh, well, the possible citation for sixty-eight East Village Road. If you'll remember, we had the letter, uh, that came to each one of you individually. I did send out a final request for voluntary compliance. Um. And.
And.
And, okay, so. I sent it out email. Um. Certified mail and regular mail, um, but it did go out middle of last week. Uh, got a response this afternoon. Okay. Yeah.
This evening, so at five oh four.
At five oh four, yep.
He wrote, folks, apologies. I tried to coordinate this so I could be in Monroe tonight. I have physical therapy. The problem is I don't have a vehicle. My truck's on the lift in the garage out of town. Suzie had surgery last week and she has an appointment at five thirty with her car, so I'm gonna have to pass tonight, but I can make the next meeting for sure.
The letter.
At five o'clock.
Did he receive this?
Uh, five o'clock this afternoon.
No.
No, when did he receive it? I put a letter in his mail.
Did he get the email?
When did he get the email? Uh, Wednesday last week?
He's had a week.
What's that?
He's had a week.
Uh, Wednesday last week, yes, it would have to be Wednesday or maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, because Thursday we were off. It had to be Tuesday or Wednesday.
It didn't say, I'm working on it. I have this contractor come in. I've got it scheduled. Or I got my shovel out, just.
I read you the.
What was me?
Yeah, so.
So.
Yeah.
I'm. I don't know. You were opposed last time. What do you think? I know you're not a big fan of this, but.
What is this now? What is this gonna tell him to do? All right, so in the last letter, this, this last letter that, that was sent out to him said that he either needs to. Clean up the violation, clear the violation, which he has a plan of how to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, or come to this meeting tonight with a timeline.
And a per, for a permit.
And.
Okay, so what does this citation do?
The cita- the citation starts the citation process. Implementing fines.
But there's a, there's a certain time period, so can you.
After thirty, after, he has thirty days to appeal the citation, so if I issue him a citation. He has thirty days to appeal that.
Or come here, I assume, right? I mean.
Uh, I don't think he gets an opportunity to come back here. He's, he's now.
But he has thirty days, so, so whenever he gets the citation, that starts to clock. He has thirty days to appeal it or ten days to appeal it?
Uh, I believe it was thirty days.
Um, and then if he doesn't appeal it within those designated days, he admits fault.
Okay.
Of which case then he has a certain amount of time to remedy, which I believe is only thirty days. And then, um, after that, he start appealing.
Okay, so he's, so basically it's his last opportunity to come in front of us, either to remediate it or get it, get it earned. Okay. So what do you need from us at this point?
Just, do you wanna go down the citation process? You were hesitant to do it before. You wanted to give him one more chance?
Passed.
He, he gave up his chance, but it's for me. Right, yes, you're right. He passed. Okay, so you need a motion to. Ack that.
I think it would be good to have a consensus, just the consensus been so.
Okay. Uh, anybody wanna make a motion to enforce this citation?
I'll make a motion. I'll make, make all the motions.
Yeah, I guess so.
I'll make a motion to enforce the citation.
Do we have a second?
On sixty-eight East Village.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. I can second it. I will second the. Citation. All in favor?
I think you need roll call.
All right, so. Roll call?
Yeah, we'll call it down.
Okay. Commissioner Smith? What's it now? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Can we have more discussion?
Sure.
I, I wanna hear from Commissioner Smith, what is, what is thought process? Maybe he can convince me of my thought process.
I perceive from Mr. Casao that, uh, he really did wanna do something. He wanted to work with us. And I wanna give him every opportunity, so at this point.
You wanna wait another meeting?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I'm not, I'm not sorry, sorry. I'm not sorry being sorry. I, I, I think we should. Give him a more, uh, opportunity to.
This has been going on for.
I, I, I know that and I know also that the excuse is a little late, but it is what it is and. You know, I'm. Just think one more, one more time.
Okay.
We've been, and then, and then we're without, you know, it's, look, this, you know, this is ridiculous at this point. We've given you every, every, every opportunity.
That's right. And you wanna give another one? Okay. Where are you at?
I guess I'm gonna vote no.
So at this point, because it's not a majority, we have to.
If it's a tie.
It's a tie. We can bring it up again at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Then we'll bring it up again at the next.
We're gonna pause on the citation. Will you write him an email to let him know? Is that nursery rhyme a little bit?
Yeah, I have not heard that, but if you wanna sing it.
One more chance. I'm gonna do it again. You wanna send him an email, let him know when the next meeting is.
Okay.
That we start to see.
General discussion, um, I guess we can't really do meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Cause our secretary's not here. Uh, so we'll hold that till next time. And public outreach.
Is, is Friday the, uh, the day that farmers market?
Friday is the day.
So the, uh, brochures are here. I brought them this evening. Um, I don't know if there's a couple over there if you wanna give everybody a final copy. Andrew.
What's that?
I'm sorry. Brochure, do, do we, do you have the box?
Yeah.
Who all is, who all is manning the table?
So, uh. Our.
You have to.
Chair Mark, who will be there, I will be there.
I need to make sure.
Andrew will be there from upstairs.
Okay.
Uh, we're going to have a couple of folks from Water and Conserv- Conservation and Water Committee and. Uh, a couple of folks from Aquarian.
Ooh.
Everybody's got. So, uh, we've got some stickers for kids. We got a couple of water barrels to give out. Uh, everybody wants to talk about. You know, everybody's game for talking about, uh, water and water conservation in town and. Um, you don't have a, we have a, uh, something for our. Because Amy's no longer right in the health department, we still have their, their document, their pamphlet on well testing and. Have to come for the health department, see if there's any other questions. Hopefully you, you're more. But, um.
We'll do it again.
Is there a new health department person coming in, uh, early next month, I believe?
No, this.
Okay, well, in any case, there is somebody. So if there's any questions for the health department, we'll take the sign and I think we'll be able. I'm pretty excited. We'll be able to handle, you know, handle the well.
We're not chief stand here.
This isn't, this is not Pickle Fest, is it?
Isn't that what?
Pickle Fest. There, there is a, there are a couple of weeks at the market that are way more popular.
No, Pickle Fest, we were told we could not go on Pickle Fest.
Well, they said no.
Oh, gee, uh, we, that was the first thing.
All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn? Keep it going.
I don't know.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We're adjourned.